I'm going to call a regular Board of Education meeting to order at 7 o'clock. If we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris is absent this evening and Angela has agreed to do our mission statement on roll call. So Angela?
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community. I will do roll call. Margaret?
Here.
Jessica? And Chris is absent with notice. Kyle?
Here.
Sandy?
Here.
And Sherry has also notified us that she will be very late and we may not be able to make it at all. And I am present and you have a form.
Thank you. Before we get started with our meeting, I just wanted to take a moment to recognize that Richmond Schools lost a really dear friend to the school district over the weekend. Local businessman Jim Shepherd passed away from a short battle with cancer. Those of you, parents, many parents out there probably know that Jim, for as many years, more than 10, I'm sorry that I don't know how many years he did it, but he always came to the school and gave out dictionaries to our third graders. He thought that was really important, that our students had that, and he's done it for years. He comes from a family of educators. His three sisters were teachers, two of them taught in Richmond Schools. So we are grateful for what Jim gave Richmond Schools and our thoughts and prayers are with his family.
Next, for the approval of the agenda, we are going to add an item 12D, Board Members' Approval of Amendment to REA Contract. So with that being said, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I motion to amend the agenda to add the action item 12D, Approval of Amendment to the REA Contract.
Or?
It has been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Flow moved.
Support?
Angela, was that you?
Yes.
Okay, it has been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Mr. Wamsley?
We had two resignations, Madison Rich and the Early Childhood Program and Colleen Thomas, Colleen was expected to come back October 1st. Due to some personal reasons, she decided to retire. New hires, we had Jennifer Green, who is a preschool teacher. Timothy Laziness, a driver, transportation driver. Megan Scheible, a driver. Mr. Tavano is a coach for the, who's been hired as a coach, excuse me, and Hannah Willis is a childcare and the Early Childhood Center.
Excellent. Any questions? Other than that, so that's two new bus drivers, is that what?
Yes.
That's good. Okay, it has been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, our bond update. Mr. Wamsley?
Okay, tonight we have Dan Jerome and Jerry McCallen here from French and Associates at Ock. Find you, Dan right there and Jerry will be too.
I've seen Jerry.
Dan, give me a second. I will share the screen. I don't know if you can share it on your end. I don't, so let me just pull it up here. Tonight, we're going to talk about the concept drawing or the design drawings for the middle school, high school, and overall site plans.
Right. So it's good to be here again. Glad to see everybody. Last time I was here was when we had a similar presentation for Lee Elementary. And we've got a lot more to cover here tonight. I will try to keep you on task and take a reasonable amount of time. But as always, feel free to ask any questions as we're going through the presentation.
Thank you.
Awesome, thanks.
Get on there.
Yep, great. So tonight, we're going to walk through what we call the Design Development Presentation for the middle school, the high school, and then the campus-wide site improvements as well. A design development is a stopping point before we go into the last phase of the design. It's a great checkpoint because the project is developed enough where, you know, all the scope is pretty much on paper and what's left to do is really to fine tune and do all the detailed, construction details and things like that. So middle school, high school, and campus-wide site. We'll start with the middle school. And first should be an overall floor plan, perfect. So this is a floor plan of the middle school, which describes the different pieces of work that are happening. The purple area on the front of the building, on the north side of the building, is currently two classrooms, an art classroom and another classroom. And we are converting that space into the new main office with a secure entrance as part of the main office. The light green area in the center of the building is the current main office. And we're converting that space and a little bit of the space around it into four classrooms in the center of the building. The gray space right next to that is your media center. And we are doing some significant remodeling of the media center. A little green space just next to the media center, there will be the new teacher's lounge. The teacher's lounge is in that main office area that's being relocated for the four classrooms. On the south side of the building is what is currently a locker commons. We're converting that into office space. And right next to that in blue is the central office, the district office, expansion of the district office there. And we'll talk about that more. A concessions room being added just outside the gymnasium in what is currently a banned practice slash storage room. A little bit of remodeling in the locker rooms and we'll talk more about that. And then throughout the building, we're replacing a lot of doors and hardware, interior doors and hardware in the building. So the first diagram we'll have pop up is the, and that's not showing up great, is the main office area. The feature components of the main office are a security vestibule, reception space and work area just inside the secure vestibule. The key thing that we're doing here is we're controlling access to the school. The security vestibule controls access into the main office, but then once somebody's in the main office, they still have to be admitted out a door into the school itself. Coming from the school into the office, that access is always free. So any student or teacher that's in the school can always come through that door into the office. It's only controlled going out into the school. There will be principal and assistant principals' offices right there, a sick room and restroom associated with the main office. And then the other side is a large meeting room, a couple of more offices, and a work room and storage and those kind of support spaces.
Dan, I just want to say, in the design for the middle school office for the board, we moved the conference room into the office so that if we have to run IEPs or other meetings or bringing outside people, we're not taking them through the building. They're contained in the office area.
Thanks, Brian. And the next slide is an image of the new main office. So right now, this area of the building is just all kind of the same brown brick and some windows and a few doors. We identified, you know, we need to make this pop out so that when visitors come to the building, they can tell where they're supposed to go. And we're using the blue brick, again, taking similar design ideas that we used on the elementary school and actually expanding on them a little bit more to get to our design for the main entrance to the main office here. You know, students that come in and out every day, parents that drop off their kids, they're not the ones that are going to use this entrance to come in. This is for visitors, this is for people that are coming for the first time. And this is for, I always use guys like me when I have to come to a school and visit. This is a door that I would go into. So it's important to be able to identify that main entrance. The media center gets a significant, significant amount of work in that right now, if you're familiar with the middle school media center, it has these half walls that kind of zigzag along the sides of the media center. We're going to keep the half walls, but we're going to take the zigzag out. We're just going to have it be straight walls along the sides of the media center. We feel this is important because we are bringing some student lockers in and placing them along the wall of the media center. So we want to gain that width there in those two corridors that run alongside the media center. The two squares in the corners of the media center, that one is, will be the media center office. And the square in the bottom will be the school store. Currently, those, the floors of those spaces are down at media center level. We're going to build those up so that those floors are on the same level as the corridors around the media center. And that'll make those spaces, I think, a little bit more usable and it will make them accessible from the, from the main floor. As you know, your media center is depressed down about two feet. And then the green space to the left of the media center there, the darker green, is currently the media center office and work room. And that's the space that will be converted into the new teacher's lounge. So a pretty simple conversion there. Next up, I think we'll have, so this, yes, so this is what is currently the main office, the teacher's lounge, all that is clustered in the center of the building right now. And that space gets converted into four classrooms. The two larger classrooms on the right are set up as art classrooms with a small kiln room in between. And then the other two classrooms are just general ed classrooms, normal classrooms. And then the brown space on the bottom is currently a locker commons. And again, that gets converted into two offices and a literacy room. We take the lockers from that space and we have to relocate them in the hallway outside of the media center and then in the hallways just outside of these new art classrooms. This is central office, the district administration office. Here, we are expanding into the current fitness room at the middle school. And we're really, what we're doing here is we're adding a restroom and a break room within, within the central office, expanding the reception space and also creating a secure vestibule there. So we'll enclose the vestibule completely, add a door that goes to the left when you walk in. And that'll be the reception space. And then we will also be adding an office there adjacent to the superintendent's office. This slide is, is here to show the extent of the new flooring that will be installed in the, in the middle school. The light blue is the classrooms for the most part, and those will have carpet tile floors. The kind of rust color and light greens are two different types of vinyl tile that will be installed in the school. The, they're kind of hard to see, but there are purple areas at all the entrances and this is what we call walk-off carpet. It's a high durability kind of scruffy carpet tile that we put down at entrances. Lets people wipe their feet off without having to have those rubber mats all over the building. And then we got a little bit of ceramic tile work inside the locker rooms where we're creating, we're reducing the sizes of the showers and creating new showers in those spaces. Along with lots of floors, lots of ceilings and lights. And again, you can see almost building-wide ceiling and lighting replacement. A few areas, you know, like the gymnasium obviously doesn't have a ceiling. The large square just on the north side of the building there, that will be the new fitness room. And so that'll have exposed construction above, so we'll get a new ceiling. And then the kitchen is another area where we can leave the ceiling and lights in place. We are replacing not half, but probably 30 to 40% of the roof at the middle school. The previous areas of roof were replaced, I think in the 2013 bond. Thank you, Brian. So we'll get the rest of the roof now and you'll have pretty much all roofs that are at least less than five, six years old. Similar to the elementary school, we are adding cooling to all of the classrooms in the building. And those are the rust-colored spaces. We are able to reuse the existing unit ventilators that are in each classroom and simply add a cooling element to those unit ventilators. Not an exciting piece of work, but an important piece of work is a boiler replacement. This allows you to gain efficiency in your gas usage and it's just a big ticket item that you can accomplish under the bond issue. Some areas don't have, won't have unit ventilators like the classrooms will, will actually be served by traditional rooftop units and ductwork that runs down to the spaces below. That'll be the main office, that'll be central office. And the classrooms in the center of the space, center of the building, the new classrooms, because they're not on outside walls, will use a rooftop unit to bring in ventilation and heating and cooling to those classrooms too. From an electrical improvement standpoint, we are building-wide new fire alarm, PA and clock system that, as we indicated with the ceiling replacement, wherever we're getting new ceilings, we're getting new lights, like we did at the elementary school, we're going to add an emergency generator. The generator won't power the whole building during a powder outage. It's put there to keep a boiler going during a powder outage, keep the freezers and coolers operating during a outage. So just some essential equipment. We had a lot of clients, last couple of years, had significant power outages in the winter and had a lot of freeze-ups in their buildings because their boilers would shut down. So this, the emergency generator will prevent that from ever happening. We do have to upgrade the electrical service in the building in order to add the cooling loads to the building, meaning that there's not enough power in the building to add that additional load. So we will be upgrading the electrical service. All right, if there aren't any middle school questions, I'm going to roll on to the high school.
Do you have any questions?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is our overall plan of the high school. And obviously, the feature of the high school project is at the south end of the building, the lime green area is the auxiliary gym and fitness center addition. In the upper right-hand corner, we are taking some existing classrooms and remodeling them to convert them into the robotics lab. Little bit of work in the main office at the high school in the purple area to improve the main office in a little bit, and we'll talk more about that. Replacing lockers in the locker rooms, kind of hard to see, but there is a little splash of color there in the locker rooms indicating the locker replacement. We're adding an outdoor entrance to the culinary arts area inside the courtyard there. We are converting the existing fitness room, even though you don't use it as a fitness room, there is a small space that was designed as a fitness room. And we're converting that to a team room. And then the mini gym has some spaces on the west side that we're just kind of opening up and getting rid of some unused lockers and things like that and making those more usable spaces. And then similar to the middle school, building-wide door and hardware replacement.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yeah.
When you, you're talking the team room, what does that mean?
Okay, well, I'm going to, we're going to, let's jump to the next slide.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That's all right. And I'll actually, we'll talk about the team room. So right now, there's a fitness room there, right? So what we decided to do is add a small locker room space there, just a couple of lockers and then a private toilet and shower room. This is a space that can be used by officials. We also have been adding these in a lot of schools as a unisex locker room opportunity. And this kind of solves a lot of issues that can, that can be, that you can run into now. And then the rest of the space is a space where a team can come in and use as a room to be coached inside the building. So it's just kind of a big open space that's large enough for a team to come into. Whether that's a visiting team or the home team or whoever uses that. We have some team rooms where they'll watch videos and things like that and do some film room type of, of use.
Okay.
Along with, and like I said, that's, that's that existing fitness room, it's already there on the southeast corner of the building.
Angela, are you going to, Angela, did you have a question?
I think he answered my question. We're good, thank you.
The auxiliary gym is the large space on the south side there, a great big auxiliary gym. You see the basketball court in the center. There's volleyball court. There is, we'll put a multipurpose floor in there so it can be used for just about anything. Running track around the courts, batting cage on the west side of the gym, a divider curtain down the center so that you can drop the curtain and have two separate groups using the space at the same time. And there's a very small set of fixed bleachers on the north side of the auxiliary gym, just about 100 seats is all. The fitness center is the block of space on the right-hand side there, and we're really excited about this. Again, we'll put that same multipurpose room floor in the fitness center. But kind of taking the weight room that you have at the middle school, bringing it back to the high school and trying to create a nicer and more featured fitness room space there. There will be a lobby as part of the auxiliary gym addition right there. And you will be able to open this piece of the building up separate from the rest of the building if you ever wanted to. We'll design it so we can close a set of cross corridor doors there and that this wing of the building could operate independent of the rest of the building. And if we go to the next slide, then you'll see, this is, oh, it's the, the videos on the right-hand side are just clipping it out. So, so you can see, that is the fitness room with the glass wall and the blue metal panel above. The auxiliary gym is behind it. You can see just a glimpse of it coming up above there. And the auxiliary gym is really just an extension of your current gymnasium. It's, it's got the same, same design really. We just took that, that gymnasium design and extended it out. And we're focusing more on, on the auxiliary or the fitness room and the entrance to this wing. And again, we've got the blue brick wall and the silver metal panel overhang. So we're starting to create this motif that we have at the elementary school, we'll have the middle school, and we'll bring it into the high school as well. The little square blue brick accents there, we have those in the end walls of the elementary school classroom additions. So we start to bring these elements in and repeat these elements. And you really have a unique situation in Richmond with your campus and having all three buildings on the same campus. So we're trying to develop it where they, they kind of have some, some common elements to them as well. The main office, again, not a, not a ton of work in the main office, but we are improving, you already have a secure vestibule, but we are going to improve the controlled access out into the school by, again, requiring somebody to be given access to get through those doors and get out into the school. You'll always be able to get back into the office once you're in the school, but we'll control that access out. There are some cabinets and some finishes that are in need of replacement in the main office and we'll be taking care of those as well.
Dan, can I interject here?
Sure.
The board members, this is where the current counselor is when you walk in. That office is being removed and moving down. So you basically have one, two, three offices in a row. This is the conference room that we typically have gone in for closed sessions. There is a storage room in the office along this wall. It's kind of a counter or welcome, so it creates a larger opening, or I guess a vestibule, if you will. This is where you come in the building. Again, here's a counter, here's the two secretarial desks, there's a hallway, principal, dean, counselor, vice versa. There's a storage. So it's a little different layout. And again, what I like about this design, and it's going to be in all three buildings, is if someone comes into the office, they still can't get into the building unless someone either buzzes them or you have a badge card that gets you into the rest of the building. So it's an added layer of security that will be in all three buildings.
Here's the robotics room. And again, this is currently a couple of classrooms and then I can't, can't remember what the third space is. It's a
Custodial workshop storage.
Yes, thank you, Brian. But we will open that up. It'll have its own entrance from the parking lot. There's actually a door there now that we're going to reuse the opening. It'll have a showcase once you come in, the entrance, storage and a work room and its own little restroom area. And this is an area where we'll put a polyurethane floor down, a very hard, but just more of a concrete coating, coated floor as opposed to any sort of material on the floor. And again, carrying our blue brick and silver metal panel motif around. This will be the robotics room entrance. Instead of doing squares that are actually brick squares, we actually just thought it'd be nice to cut holes in the blue brick wall. It's fun. People will take their pictures there. This is the culinary arts entrance. So if you come down through the courtyard where the culinary arts room is, it's a simple little tweak of your building, but to add a, an entrance to the culinary arts area where even, that people can pick up food or come in and have a small waiting area before they go in to sit down in culinary arts. We're going to add a little overhang there too, but we haven't figured out exactly what it looks like yet. So I can't share that one yet. We are still working on it. It'll probably have some silver metal panel and some blue though, so I'm pretty sure of that.
I just want to go back. Yes.
The culinary entrance that we're talking about here, that so that when it, we're back to whatever is normal, we're up and running, that people from the outside are going to enter into the restaurant from there?
Yes. That, that's intent, that they would park over in the parking lot, which we have, and then we'd have a walkway, potentially some outdoor seating or whatever. But yeah, that would be a separate entrance way. It'd go right into the culinary room and exit from the culinary room.
Okay.
On the robotics wall, we're envisioning on this wall, some type of robotics logos or so forth that identifies this as the robotics wing, if you will.
So here's our flooring replacement diagram for the, the high school. Again, you see a lot of carpet tile in light blue, a lot of vinyl tile in rust color and light green. And then, you know, our little touches of walk-off carpet and ceramic tile and things like that. I don't know why the multipurpose room and the auxiliary gym are two different colors here, because it is our intent that that just has the same floor that flows through there. In fact, I think we actually put the, there's a pair of large double doors between the multi, or the auxiliary gym and the fitness room. And I think we plan to put those on hold open so that those doors can be, can be open and allow that, that flow back and forth between those two rooms. Here's our ceiling and lighting replacement. Again, you see most of the building, again, getting new ceilings and lights. You've got some newer science classrooms on the southwest side. Those, we are not planning on replacing the ceilings and lights in those rooms. And then obviously, your auditorium and gym spaces are different types of ceiling and lighting, and we are not replacing those other than a few of the, the house lights and things like that in the auditorium. There are some roofs to be replaced at the high school. There are some roofs to be replaced at the high school that have not been replaced recently. Most notably, the gym, the auditorium, and the cafeteria.
I believe all of that was in the 96 bond, the auditorium and, et cetera.
Yeah. I didn't mention the, in the cafeteria, the, the, not a ton of work, but we are tweaking the concession stand so that it can operate independent of the kitchen.
Yeah, currently in the concession area, they do not have any sinks to wash the equipment. And so they oftentimes will use, or they will use, the cafeteria. So we're creating the concessions to be self-contained and keeping the kitchen self-contained in that area.
Mechanical improvements, same concept, adding cooling to the existing classroom unit ventilators. Again, boiler replacement, not a, you know, exciting job, but an important job. And then rooftop units will serve the main office, the robotics room. The media center gets a new rooftop unit, and obviously the, the additions will also have new mechanical units to take care of the auxiliary gym and fitness center. Electrically, we continue District Y with a new fire alarm system, PA system and clock system along with the, the new lighting. Again, an emergency generator for specific pieces of equipment. Again, we have to upgrade the electrical services to high school to handle the additional electrical load introduced by cooling. And the choir room needs a new sound system, so we're picking that up as part of the project. Okay, so lastly, we'll talk real quick about what's gonna happen outside the building. This is just as important, if not more important than and what's happening inside of the buildings. I've tried to keep the diagram simple here, so, because there's a lot going on. But in general, we are replacing, well, not in general, we are replacing all, repaving or reconstructing all pavement parking lots and drives on campus. They will all be redone in some fashion. The areas that you see in blue on this diagram are areas where we're changing the configuration. In other words, we're not just taking asphalt up and putting asphalt back down in the same, same layout. We're actually gonna change the configuration, and I'll describe each of those areas to you. The kind of rust-colored space, those are the rust-colored areas are the additions that we're adding at each building, so. Okay, I did middle school first here. So at the middle school, on the north side of the middle school, the, the drive, which I call Blue Devil Parkway, and it's just not catching on. I'm very disappointed in it. But I call it Blue Devil Parkway.
That is disappointing.
Yeah, we're going to add a bus drop-off on the south side of, of the drive. So that, right now, the buses just stop in the road and everybody kind of tangles up there. We're gonna provide all along the, the north side of the middle school there, we're gonna add another lane that the buses can pull off to and drop students off, pick students up, and still allow the two-way traffic on Blue Devil Parkway. The parking lot that's on the north side of, of the road, we will basically double the size of that parking lot. And then from there, we will add a sidewalk down to the new main entrance location. The bell can stay where it's at. The bell is just a little bit to the, no, it's on, I see on the other side. The bell is just, that's the bell right there, yeah. So that's gonna be fine to stay where it's at. And then we thought we'd take a little bit of the pavement out. It's right there in front of the, where everybody comes in now. Um, there's a big sea of concrete there. We think we can cut some of that out. Because that's not really where we want everybody to come anymore. The students will still come there when they get off the bus. But there's, there's still gonna be plenty of sidewalk width to accommodate all the students coming in and out without that big courtyard of pavement. On the south side of the middle school, not a lot, mostly just a little repaving what's there. But the dumpsters are right side, right outside of central office. We're gonna pick the dumpsters up and move them away from, from the central office doors there. And then just add a little bit of sidewalk and green space on the south side of central office. This is the elementary school. And our three classroom additions are the, the kind of rust-colored pieces on the ends of the building there. The big idea here at the elementary school, right now, the parking lot is outside of the, of Blue Devil Parkway. We're gonna bring the parking lot inside Blue Devil Parkway so that when you park in the parking lot, you don't have to cross it. You can get to the building without crossing the road. So the, the road kind of changes its alignment a little bit, which isn't a bad thing. It'll slow people down a little bit as they're driving through there. And then the parking lot comes inside. We didn't add many parking spaces. I mean, it's all, I think it's only an add of like eight parking spaces. But we did design it so that if you need to expand that parking lot to the east in the future, that you can. There's plenty of room for expansion there. The current, and that, that loop that goes in that parking lot and then comes out to the drive, that will be the parent drop-off loop. So the cars will, will drop off there. The cars will line up there at the end of the school day to pick up their, their elementary school students. The loop that goes in across the front of the building will now be the bus drive. So we are gonna repave that with a thicker cross-section. Buses require thicker pavement than cars do. So we are gonna repave that, and now the buses will use that to come in and drop off the students that are on the bus. And this is high school, slide one. So let's start with 32 Mile. Right now, on 32 Mile, off of 32 Mile, near the auditorium and the main entrance of the high school. You have like an angled drive and then a few parking spaces. We're gonna add, we're basically gonna more than double the number of parking spaces that are in that lot. And we're gonna square the drive up so that it can be an entrance and an exit, okay? So you'll be able to enter and exit off of 32 Mile Road into that, that expanded parking area on the north side of the school. The other big idea here is cutting Blue Devil Parkway off so that you can't drive straight past the east side of the high school. We want the students who park in the student parking lot to have a path to the building without crossing any traffic. And so that's been developed in this layout by cutting the road off and routing it through and around the student parking lot. So the students will, will come in, these, these young 17-year-old drivers are coming off a 32-mile road. They will turn into the parking lot. We're gonna put some boulders along that edge so that if it's icy and they're going too fast, they won't careen up onto the sidewalk and take out any of their friends. They will just hit some boulders and damage their car. We think that's a better option. But from there, you go into the parking lot. And that's the, the large parking area where you can get to the main entrance of the building. You can get to the robotics entrance. And you can get down the sidewalk into the courtyard to the culinary arts entrance. We'll all be accessed from that large parking lot. Moving farther south, oh, this is along the east side of the high school. So again, we've cut the access to 32 Mile Road straight north out. You can still get out to 32 Mile Road by going around the student parking lot and, and getting, there's a little drive on, on the east edge of the student parking lot that goes out on the 32 Mile Road. That will still be there. It's a right turn only. So that, we will keep that in place so that, that access through there is still available. But it's just not, not cutting off the student parking lot anymore. We also, we're gonna eliminate the parallel parking row on the west side of the roadway along the high school. And instead of that, we're gonna add a row of barrier-free parking spaces near our fitness room addition, you know, it's a little right down there. Yeah, perfect. And then from there, we'll just have our sidewalks that come up to the new auxiliary gym and fitness room. All right, this next diagram is when all this site work is going to happen. This is too much to do in one summer. So real simply, if it's orange, it gets done in the summer of 2021. If it's green, it gets done in the summer of 2022. So you will have some pieces in place each summer, and we won't take everything away.
In this plan, basically, at the end of the summer of 21, the elementary is pretty much completely done.
Yes.
I mean, the parking lot, the roads renovation. The interior renovations for the middle school and high school are scheduled for 20, this summer, the 20 of 20, 20, 21. However, there will be some parking lots, as you can see in the green, student parking lot, the roadway, and the back parking lot in the auditorium. I just wanted to point out, in the, in the original Bond concept that we talked about, we talked about expanding this parking lot. But as we looked at it and looked at the uses for the auditorium, by expanding the front parking lot, we bring more parking closer to where people are entering the auditorium. So from a community perspective, from a facility use, I think Dan, or Dan said he doubled, and I think it's actually more than doubled because there's not many parks in that, front of that high school. Again, it creates a, a loopway. In all cases, we've been looking at, focusing on protecting kids, particularly at the elementary, putting that road on the outside. Again, with the idea to expand if we ever need to in the future, it's there and ready to go. At the high school, taking that road out, if you've ever dropped off a student in the high school in the front, if you ever play the game Frogger, it's like Frogger crossing that road. It's, it's very challenging for students to cross, so.
Yeah, so I, I believe the intent is that the, the parking lot in front of the building will be, and, and the drive around it will be the student drop-off area once we're complete. So we'll have that independent, and it's such a good idea to keep student drivers away from that, that drop-off loop. It's, it's really, if you can accommodate that, it's, it's really a great thing to be able to pull off.
The other thing, by switching the parking lots and going north to south, our current parking lots go east to west, we gain a couple spots.
We do, we gain a few spaces.
So, so then the, the gist is that, with the exception of, you call it blue, Dan, I call it green, of the, the parking that's gonna be in 2022, the rest of the stuff we're talking about here tonight will all be done at the beginning of 2122. Is that correct?
Right, correct, yeah, and-
At the end of 2021 summer, or, yes, 2021 summer, all of this will be done with the exception of this green parking.
Yeah, there are, there are a couple things that will probably extend past the beginning of school. In particular, the gym addition.
Okay.
That will, that will not be complete for open to school. We're probably looking at that gym, auxiliary gymnasium coming online closer to January. And then there will be some elements on the outside of the building. I just wanna make sure it's understood now. These metal panels and these metal column covers, these are long lead items that we will have the, the building access complete and safe, but we will be picking up some things. And if you look down the road at some of the other jobs that are going on, you're gonna, probably a better image would be even maybe the middle school where those radius panels are, Brian? Yeah, so those radius panels, they don't come off the shelf. They need to be field-measured. And they're at eight to 12-week lead time. As you can imagine, we don't have eight to 12 weeks of summer even to really get those. So those will come later, but the work that, that we're doing is touching nearly every square inch of, of the school. So we will be, we will be, we will be pretty busy in the district, yes. The work that you've heard tonight is season 21. The site work, obviously, we've, we've gotta leave some access for just the work to happen, plus trying to get that amount of work done in the summer is, is a little much. So yeah, that's where we're at.
Okay, yeah, I just, you know, it's always the questions that you get, you know, the people asking, so it's, it's always good to know what you're talking about when you're asked the question.
Yep, the other thing that we're talking to Brian about in, in this is any of the things that we can pull into evenings, that we can do safely out of the way of the operation, what's going on, we'll try to pull into what we consider the off-season, meaning that winter, spring. So there, there will be some activity, but it's gonna be education first, construction second. But we know we gotta get out of your way so you can teach again in the fall.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, this next slide, I didn't want to fail to mention, we are doing some significant improvement to your baseball and softball fields, new dugouts. Replacing existing backstops and fencing that are in poor condition. But when we started to look at that, a question came up. Your existing junior varsity softball field is, is a kind of a grayish diamond shape there. And when we looked at that, we recognized the fact that if you were ever going to expand your middle school, the most likely location for expansion would be that southwest corner of the building. And so the question becomes, do we want to put, invest money in a field that's in the location of potential future expansion? The option being that we could construct an entire new field right next to the existing, that's the green one. Where there actually is a field there now, but it's an undersized kind of little league or, or, you know, a little league field. We could construct a new full-size softball field right next to the varsity softball field that's currently there. And this is not something that was ever contemplated when the bond was planned. It's, it's something that we've thought about as we started working on the projects. And we really don't have an answer yet to exactly what we're, what we think is right, but we wanted to, to share that these options with the board to let you know how we were, what we were considering as we, we think about improving the baseball and softball fields.
So as you, as we talked about, like, the elementary and with the addition, you know, we've had the, the mindset of looking into the future. And as we have our enrollment, this, this past school year, the current year, we, we currently have five sections of every grade level at the elementary school except one grade, second grade. We didn't have that last year. We actually have more teachers there this year than we did last year. As those classes go over or come over to the middle school, the four current sections we have at the elementary, or the fourth grade, and the four current, we typically have a fifth grade, they're gonna grow. And so with the, with the renovations at the middle school, moving the office, creating the existing classrooms interior-wise, at some point, if things continue, we're gonna have to look at another option or additional options for the middle school and be able to adjust the, where we put them. And so the conversation is, is why, was why put the taxpayer dollars into something that, you know, maybe it's five years, maybe it's six years down the road, you're gonna have to tear out as a collective organization to expand. And so the options could be to expand in the middle, or the front of the middle school where you have the new parking lot, new road you just put in, or in the back. In the back seems the most logical explanation because you have a lot of space as a district there. You can pull right off an existing hallway in the 500 wing at the middle school, almost mimicking what you have there and continue to, to grow. So this would invest more dollars than what we currently budgeted for the athletic baseball and softball improvement. We're under budget in the football field, the, the turf project. As we finalize those numbers, so I, I would be looking at keeping those dollars in the same athletic pot and looking at a concept like this where it positions the board or a future board to be able to make that decision without having to tear out an investment that they put in in, in 2021.
So is, is the question, are you, are you asking us what we think about this, or?
What I, yes, I am asking you because what we gotta do is we have to start finalizing the drawings. The athletic, the athletic field bid package will come to you at a later point. It won't be part of the middle school, high school site plans that are going out to bid and will come to you in November, December timeframe. So if, if this is where the board really wants to do it and leave that area for future growth or the ability, then I'll be working with Dan and Jerry regarding relocating that football, or that, excuse me, that softball field and putting the dugouts and everything there. To me, that, that, this makes a wise investment, I would say, on the board's side. a wise investment, I would say, on the board's side, uh, and looking at for the future, for, for my angle.
Well, yeah, I mean, if, if the idea is, we're gonna spend all this money to fix that field up and then potentially have to get rid of it, that's probably silly. So where the new varsity field is where that young, young girls' age plays, so the existing varsity would become the JV, is that what you're saying?
Probably, yeah, because I, I mean, you've got a nice varsity softball field, but I think when we build a new softball field right next to it, they're gonna say, hey, this one's a little nicer than what we have, let's move the varsity over there, and then the varsity softball field would become the JV softball field.
I do have a question, will two, I don't know how often this happens, but do we have games going on at the same time for JV and varsity, and is that enough room for both to play at the same time?
Yeah, so we, we've had, uh, we've met with the coaches once, um, and talked about that, so we're, we're, you know, it's still to be, be developed. Um, these are both showing two hundred feet down the line, um, and the, the softball coach said, you know, a hundred and ninety feet is fine. So we could pick up some space between the fields that way, so we'll develop some options on that and get that figured out, so.
But the idea would not, if we went down this road, the idea is, we wouldn't, we would still leave this field to be used. I mean, we're just not making the investment in this.
We're just not fixing it.
Correct. Yeah, still, there's some things that we're gonna have to look at, um, like we talked in the JV um, baseball field about the ability to get power over there, um, to make the fields, both softball and, and JV as comparable as possible for Title IX. Um, you know, there, there's obviously improvements. In this plan, basically, all the dugouts on the JV and varsity fields for both softball and baseball would be replaced and redone.
Except the visitors dugout on the varsity softball.
Right here, this dugout here.
Yeah. But it's the visitors.
Yeah, who, who cares about them?
Yeah, that's right.
It's not in bad shape either, it's, it's, it's serviceable.
It's pretty nice, it's got a storage room on the end and everything, so we're like, oh, why would we tear that down?
So, so Brian, you want to hear from all of us what we think so that you can keep working with the coaches and whoever else to move this along?
Right, a- as Dan said, we met once with the coaches already, got some ideas and feedback, Dan had shown them these drawings. Um, uh, they, they put some input on things that they'd like us to look into, um, different backstops, et cetera. Um, at the varsity field, looking at uh having a storage room, um, you know, and so forth, so we, we've got more work to do, but this, this would be an increase in dollars that we would have to allocate towards athletics. Um, I don't, I don't believe from a district level, we did any athletic improvements other than the track since the ninety-six bond. So I think overall, it, it's, you know, if you're asking my recommend, I would recommend we go this way, it, it positions as a board, um, it's closer parking to the people who are um going to both of these games. You know, the parking is closer than uh just a few spots here that people have access here. There's a lot of pluses on it. Um, as Howard told me when we met, that was the original varsity field when he started coaching, and I forgot the year he told me he started coaching.
Nineteen seventy-eight.
So.
Right, forty-two years. That's what he said.
Yeah. I hate to say, but that, that shows how old I am, that I, that I knew that was there, but it was seventy-eight.
So I guess if, if the board's in agreement to go down this, then we'll continue working, and this will be our plan that we'll be bringing to you, is to relocate the uh, the JV softball field.
I don't have any problem with it. Anybody else? Comments?
We would still get to, like, comment or approve or whatnot, or, and discuss any, obviously, any plans that come to us. Or we're not just saying.
No, it's just that, that we can begin working on to the design, what the dugouts, backstops, all that, what that field looks like, what the other fields look like.
Now, there's fencing around the current varsity field, so would there be fencing around both of those fields, like separately, or, like, do we know what that would look like?
Yeah, yeah, most likely there would, yes, be two separate fences around each field.
And you said that, it's two hundred feet, you said, from the plate to the?
That's what we've drawn. Um, that's the sta- a standard softball field, uh, dimension is two hundred feet. But like I said, in meeting with the, the softball coach, he's like, you know, I'm, if it's one ninety down the line, we're fine, and it can get a little deeper in centerfield that way. So, you know, that's, I like softball and baseball fields because they don't all have to be exactly the same, right? They can, they can be tweaked a little bit, um, so, um, we can make some tweaks like that and, and and uh kind of customize it to uh the, the space that's available there.
Hey Dan, would you explain why you tilted this field and, and some of the reasons?
Oh, yeah, well, there's a, there is this kind of finger of swampy land that sticks out there, see, yeah, there's a, we outlined it. Um, so there's some bad ground that sticks out there. And, and if I squared it up, then part of uh, uh, I guess it would be right field goes into the, the swamp. And we don't want to build in a swamp, it's a bad idea as a rule. Um, so we just kind of rotated the field a little bit to get right field out of the swamp. So that's why it's on that angle like that.
So then the, the remaining fields that are already there then would, I mean, would it affect them at all?
It would affect them in that there would be a fence in the outfield now, right now, it's all just open, right?
Right.
So there would be that fence in the outfield that, um, you know, especially, and I don't, you know, I, I saw football practicing out there, I understand they're they're little league, they're, they're young softball leagues, certainly for a young softball league and a little league, probably that, the fence out there is not an issue. Um, you know.
So you wouldn't be doing anything with the other two fields, and that would be behind that?
No, we would not.
Okay.
I, I don't think it would affect either of those fields, they'd still be able to, to use them and uh,
Right.
Yeah, they wouldn't, the fence wouldn't be close to coming in to play from uh, for the two backfields.
Yeah, no, I don't think so either, I just was making sure that those would still stay.
Yeah, our original intent was to put the, the home plate of the new field right where the home plate of that existing field is, but it would have been like a hundred and seventy feet down the line, it would have been too short down the line to, to, to put a new softball field in that orientation, so.
Okay, I mean, I think it makes more sense to do something like that than to uh do, you know, uh, put all this money and work into a field that we might have to move down the line.
And I think uh all of us would hope that we'd have that problem of needing to expand the middle school in the next decade, so, um, I'm good with that.
I am as well. Brian, you mentioned that we were under budget on the football field, do you know offhand how much under budget we were?
Um, Jerry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're roughly uh looking to return about a hundred and sixty thousand in contingency uh that we had anticipated for running into maybe some uh, uh, more soil conditions than we did. Uh, but we may, it's gonna be in that neighborhood of, of uh return of contingency.
There were some things at the football field, like we, the tree died and we took out the brick, that we had to relocate that brick, uh, some cement work that we had to put in that we didn't anticipate in the original scope of the work. Um, so there were some costs that we added, um. There's one other thing, I'm drawing a blank on it, but, um, but yeah, about a hundred and sixty thousand.
Angela, are you good?
Yes, I, yeah, I'm, I'm good, I agree.
And I, and we will continue working with the coaches, uh, Mr. Reinhardt, as we start finalize, going to the next step and ultimately get to some I don't wanna say final drawings before we come to the board and, and kind of show you, here's what we come up with after all the input, so. Alright.
So last, last slide is just, you know, we finalized the scope, we gotta finalize our interior and exterior materials, complete the, the details and specifications for the job. It is our plan that will deliver the bid documents to the construction manager out on October the nineteenth. Um, so it'll go to them from that point. Um, we will also submit it for state of Michigan plan review, um, there are other agencies because of the work that's happening on thirty-two mile road. Um, because of the uh expansion of parking that we're doing. Macomb County Road Commission and Macomb County Drain Commission will both have a look at this project. Um, so there will be something that comes out of those reviews. Let's see, if we just expect it, we'll be better off. Um, and then the Macomb County Health Department will also have a look because of the work being done in the cafeterias, so.
And we're looking to uh set our bid date uh right around November seventeenth. So the, the plans get to us on the nineteenth, we would finalize our work scopes. Again, this is gonna be uh the same number of categories you saw on Lee Elementary. Uh, so it's gonna be bid out to, you know, the, the most reasonable amount of trades that we can. Uh, again, we're gonna, we're gonna strive to get local, local participation where we can, uh, particularly to the, the Richmond and Macomb County contractors. Uh, and then we would be doing our post-bids and looking to bring a recommendation back to you in the December uh fourteenth board meeting, that's our, that's our schedule right now, we're targeting.
So our, our, as Jerry said, our plan is in November to kind of review with you all the different categories you have, because this is gonna be a, a big ticket item.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll do what we did with, with Lee, where we, we show you the categories of what we had, the approximate uh estimated value that we have for those categories that will be uh coming to you for recommendations, so you have an idea ahead of it. Um, and we can kind of talk through, uh, one of the things that, that Dan mentioned uh that we are doing for a district-wide improvement is uh like fire alarm. Uh, we're getting a bid packed so that all buildings in the district would have the same system. Now, you have a unique opportunity in this, and two things, you have a, a campus where all your buildings are all together, and also, we have an opportunity with the, the bond dollars to get one system updated across all buildings, and it, it's really something every district is probably envious of, you say, you get to do it all at once, so uh, we're gonna look to do that with uh clock, PA, and fire alarm. The fire alarm itself would be its own standalone uh bid category, which, which gives us an opportunity to get one standardized system.
Um, can I, Dan, can I just go back, you, we, it, the one page said softball, baseball, but are we talked about the softball? What are we doing, baseball?
New dugouts, uh, new backstops and fencing, um, and on both the varsity and JV.
And if you said that, I apologize, I missed it, I was looking at the pictures.
Um, the dugouts, what we're planning is, if you think of it as the shell, and then the inside of the dugouts, we're looking at being, with each of the teams will be able to customize, you know, where they want the bats stored, you know, the benches and all that, we're getting them the shell, um, uh, the roof and the shell and the fencing, et cetera.
Okay.
Um, I, I do remember, you know, when you looked at some of those, I mentioned some of those costs. Uh, one of the things I forgot was, we ran a new water line that comes from the bus garage all the way to the baseball field. Um, because the old, old water line ran underneath the football field. Um, and actually was a, what a one-inch, uh, one-inch tuber, whatever that was under it, and we, we increased it to create more, uh, more water pressure for the baseball field, so that, uh, so that was the other cost that, that we, we knew about, but we didn't know what the exact cost was gonna be until we got into the ground. Okay?
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, great being here.
Thanks, Dan, thanks, Jerry.
Okay, mov- moving on for our presentations. Uh, extended COVID-nineteen learning plan.
Okay, I'm gonna start that, that plan, you should have a copy of the plan in your packet. Uh, when the legislature and governor, um, I guess they passed a um a bill back in August that uh became law that required school districts to do, in addition to the return to learning plan, they also had to do a COVID-nineteen learning plan, which is section ninety-eight A uh in the revised school code, so. Um, what we're having here tonight is, between myself, uh, the building principals, and Mrs. Lashbrook, we're gonna go over our plan. Uh, this plan has to be um posted um by October um first. He has to be sent to the intermediate school district who has to approve it. What's kind of unique about this process is the board actually doesn't have to approve this plan, but once we submit it to the ISD and they approve it, then every thirty days, um, you have to come back, have public comment on the plan, and then have to uh do a re-endorse or re-approve the plan after that. Um, a lot of the stuff in the plan is what we have already talked about and done, uh, or have in place, so. Um, there are eleven categories in the plan. Um, and I'll just go through each of the different categories, and then I'll turn it over to the different principals or administrators um and so forth. And the first category talks about a statement as, as why the extended learning plan is necessary. Um, it's required by the House Bill uh fifty-nine thirteen, which became Public Act one forty-nine, that we have a plan, it articulates how we're providing instruction um for virtual, as well as if we were ever to move to phase three um and so forth. So the first section is really just an overview of our plan, that we have both a face-to-face and a uh remote option. The second part of the plan, or number two, talked about educational goals, if you remember uh the last board meeting, we had to identify our goals by September fifteenth, so at the last meeting, um, we shared with you our goals. Um, it is our goal that all of our students will improve their instruction from the fall to the spring. And so you have some um broad statements that we're gonna increase the number of students meeting their reading growth and math growth uh between the fall and the spring. In section two, you also see the charts that were presented to the board at the last board meeting. Um, for, um, and we are using NWA as one of the requirements, um, you have to identify a assessment, which we're gonna talk a little bit later about. Number three talks about the, how instruction will be delivered. Um, so at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to uh Mr. Koshin at the elementary school, Mr. Bartels at the middle school, Mr. Castle at the high school, and Mrs. Lashbrook, who will address uh special education. So, Mr. Koshin?
Yep, good evening, everyone, um, so looking at how instruction will be delivered at Lee Elementary. Um, it's gonna be the same thing that we have been doing, um, one thing we did add, um, as in other schools, we're doing the uh in-class camera system. Um, so as we are delivering the CITW strategies, uh, best practices, uh, to promote student learning, I mean, though we're doing that in-school, face-to-face, uh, students that are virtual, um, also get those experiences uh by using the cameras. Um, they're gonna have access, both the face-to-face and the virtual students will have access to standards line, grade-level instruction, uh, something that we are continuing, uh, that has not changed at this time. Uh, distance learners, there's still good, excuse me, the virtual learners, will continue to use the classroom schedules that the face-to-face. Um, so they're getting the same experiences uh as the face-to-face students have in the classroom. And we're, continues our state local assessments. Uh, one thing that has changed, um, is that at the beginning of the year, um, kindergarten, kindergarten readiness assessment was supposed to be used, uh, but that has been postponed by the state, so that will not be used this year, uh, that'll be something to be used in the future. And uh as we continue with our daily uh routines, uh, students are eating lunch in the cafeteria. Um, last year we had ten lunch tables, and now we're up to almost twenty lunch tables for um as much social distancing as possible in the lunchroom. And students do travel uh to their specials classrooms, so students travel to the art room, uh, computer lab, music room, uh, the gym, although most gym classes are outside at this time, and to the steam classroom.
Mr. Bartels?
Yep, um, at the middle school, um, we're running our traditional seven-period day. Um, so students will follow the uh schedule that we have traditionally set up. Um, fourth and fifth grade will follow their team teaching schedule with the traditional blocks of ELA, an hour and a half in math for an hour and a half with their um wheel or special rotation in the morning um currently, and then sixth graders will have the two specials, and then seventh and eighth graders will have um three options, um, as well as our um at-risk classes to help um make the gap smaller in, in the learning. Um, our in-person, um, it's, it's business as usual with the social distancing and the math. Um, we are using best practices, um, CITW strategies that we've been working on for several years now, those are.
Those are continuing. And our virtual learners are getting that same, um, instruction via the cameras that were put in. And both in-class and virtual, our main platform of Schoology, that we're using to house our, um, content and our assignments. And, um, Microsoft Teams we're using to, uh, reach our virtual or distant learners, um, in, in real time. So it's, it's pretty much traditional, um, traditional schedule, seven forty start, uh, two forty end. And, um, you know, similar things that the elementary is doing with, um, lunch tables, using every one, no more than two at a table, um, five, about five, six feet apart. So, so, so far, so good. Mr. Castle?
Yeah, so at Richmond High School, the students that are, uh, in-person are doing the, uh, the traditional six-hour day. Like, like, uh, Mr. Koshin, Mr. Bartel said, it's business as usual for them. Uh, our students who have elected to do the online option are still getting the exact same six-hour day. The only difference is they're getting it through the, the streaming camera system. They're getting it in real time there. Our Richmond High School students that have elected to, uh, to have in-person instruction that are taking online courses are being instructed by an approved outside agency, in this case, Michigan Virtual, and they're assigned their Richmond High School mentor. The Richmond High School students that are enrolled in the early college program through Macomb Community College are attending in-person instruction and/or online instruction based on the protocols that are currently in place for Macomb Community College. So we're kind of a, at the mercy of whatever Macomb has decided to do in their current protocols at that time. Uh, if Macomb Community College decides that they're going to change their protocols, we will follow whatever the change of protocols are from, from Community College. Uh, our students are part of the dual enrollment program, uh, receive instruction either online or person based on the outside educational entity, uh, and their protocols. So again, for those that are dual enrollment, we're kind of at the mercy of whatever that outside agency's protocols are. So there's a constant ongoing dialogue between us and the, uh, outside entities as to what their protocols and their changes are.
And so far, so good.
Yeah, couldn't have asked for a better start.
Lashbrook?
Um, and then students certified in, um, special ed have the same methods of delivery that the three principals just talked about. Their teachers and service providers are in-person, whether it's face-to-face or remote. So it's the same as, um, what these three gentlemen just talked about.
So then we go into the section number four, which talks about the core, um, description of how instruction for the core academics would be provided, if students, um, to in-person as well as if students are, and how we're going to report grades, keep progress, monitoring, et cetera. So I will start with Mr. Koshin.
For the elementary, uh, we're using the district grading policies and the state curriculum. Uh, so this is something that is continued from the, uh, previous years. So nothing has changed, uh, with what we're teaching. Students that are virtual, they have the resources available to them, uh, whether it's online resources or it's textbooks. Uh, so they have all the same materials, all the same resources that the face-to-face learners have. Also, uh, looking at how they're going to be assessed. Um, as we've mentioned earlier, we are using NWA. That's something that we are testing currently. Uh, we're in our second week of testing for the NWA. And student progress boards, uh, they will be, uh, sent home, uh, with the face-to-face students as we have done in the past. And then, uh, they'll be mailed home to those students that are virtual. So we are continuing with our communication, our two-way communication, uh, so parents know the progress of their students.
The, uh,
I have a question, if you don't mind. I'm not sure if this is for Mr. Koshin or Mrs. Lashbrook. But are the special education students that are learning virtually, do they have any options of any assistance as far as like a paraprofessional or something along those lines if needed?
Um, yeah, that's actually coming up in section six, um, where this, it's all about special ed, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
All right, um, at the middle school, um, we don't, we don't assess, um, or give assessments on anything that doesn't have a standard, uh, attached to it. And that hasn't changed. Um, so everything that we do is standard-based grading. We teach to the standard and then we test to the standard. And then all of those standards are loaded into Power School. And, uh, every Tuesday, teachers still up, update their Power School grade books. So, um, parents and students could go on the parent portal and check to see the progress on the, on each assignment. Um, so, so that hasn't, um, changed. So the other thing that we do is, Mr. Burkmire and I, is when we look at lesson plans and then when we schedule our observations and our walkthroughs, we make sure that the standards being listed in to the lesson plans are actually the standards that are being taught. Now, there might be times when we walk in where there may be a day or two off because of pacing. If they're ahead, they keep going. If it takes more time for something, then they might be a little bit behind, um, in that lesson. So, and we have conversations with their teachers regarding that. So, um, again, we're, we're moving forward with what we do and it's, um, the standards. And this, this section's about core academic, uh, the core subjects. But our, our special teachers are teaching to their standards as well. And, um, reporting on them with our standard-based grading report cards is advanced proficient, proficient, partially proficient or not proficient. And, uh, like I said, there, the, the grade books are updated every Tuesday, um, by eight AM for, for parents to be able to keep track. Mr. Castle?
Yeah, and so at the high school, uh, all of our high school teachers are expected to align their lessons to the Michigan State standards. We check the lesson plans weekly for alignment, uh, through a planbook.com, which is an online platform that, uh, Mrs. Borwick and I check weekly. The student progress is reported through the Power School online portal. And then report cards are made available quarterly for all of our students and the parents. But, uh, once those high school kids get those cell phones in their hands, they are fully aware of their grades pretty much by the hour. So, uh, they let us know if they didn't think something to put in right.
So we don't send report cards home anymore at the high school? It's all through the portal?
No, we do send them home at semester time, semester and, and both semesters. So, correct.
Yeah, Margaret, at the middle school, um, we, the very first, um, re, progress, not progress, very first market period, we do send them to fourth graders only because they're new to the building, new to the process. But then we do online only as well and then do both semesters.
That's what I thought. Okay, thanks.
I'm sorry, Chrissy.
Oh, go ahead.
If there's any parent who has that trouble or can't access parent portal, if they call the office, every building, well, we can print them off a copy at any grade level. Right. We don't have a lot of those, but it's always available. Yeah, we get, we get some requests and we make sure we get it to them. Mr. Lashbrook?
Okay, students, um, certified in special education that are on the virtual, um, delivery option are exposed to the same standards as the students who are in-person. Just like the principal said, the progress is noted in Power School. Um, but at the elementary level, the, uh, progress is sent home to parents. And then for everybody, the IEP goals also have to be sent home, uh, to parents as well at the end of each marking period.
On, um, number five, it talks about if the district is delivering instruction virtual, an assurance and description of how students will be provided equitable access to technology and the internet necessary to participate in instruction. This for our district, there are some spots in our district that the internet is not available. So there are some families that do not have the ability to get an internet or a very good internet signal. So they're limited. But in general, um, any student who wants to be virtual or parent who chooses virtual, we will provide them with laptops and if need be hotspot, uh, to utilize. So basically what we've done here is, uh, you, as you look at this, the twenty-one districts in Macomb County have all committed to this. Each district is at a different spot. Some districts do not have the technology we do. Some districts are, are, um, just like we are with the, with the number of laptops and one-to-one devices. We are ahead of many districts in the ability to offer hotspots to parents. But as I said, there are some areas in the district that the, the T-Mobile hotspots do not work or become, um, a challenge for families. So basically it's, it's, we're going to provide and, and, uh, and provide the access to, uh, technology, um, for everybody. When you go into number six, you're talking about, uh, providing students with disability and the requirements. And I'll turn that over to Mrs. Lashbrook.
Um, so what you see in part of the plan for number six came right from guidance from the Macomb ISD. And what it says is that a student's IEP is still the different, the district's offer of free, of a free, appropriate public education. But for our students who are attending virtually, a contingency learning plan, um, has to be developed by the IEP team that addresses any part of the IEP that may need to be modified because of the change in the delivery of the instruction. So to answer your question, Angela, every student who is virtual, their IEP team meets, discusses, including the parent, the parent has input, and they have to go through each part of the IEP to decide if any changes need to be, um, made or if anything in addition needs to be added. And then that becomes part of the, um, the CLP.
And we are offering an opportunity for maybe a virtual student to also have maybe a paraproto login and help that.
Absolutely, yep.
Thank you.
We have like, for instance, if one of the goals is, uh, or one of these, um, accommodations is, uh, your tester or something read to them. Uh, we have the ability that, that people can read the test to virtual students.
Absolutely.
Great to hear. Thank you.
Number seven or section seven talks about the requirement the districts will work in consultation with the health department. This is no more evident than this weekend. This, uh, we worked very closely with the health department on, on Saturday and, and whether it's a possible case or a confirmed case, um, all of our guidance in Macomb County, the templates of how we screen and when we classify someone for a confirmed case or possible, all came from the health department as part of our original plan. So, um, th- this one, I, I, I think is probably, uh, a rock solid in terms of what we, what we've done. We, our district is unique in that we also go into St. Clair County. So we're part of, uh, the St. Clair Health Department. Um, Macomb is our primary, but we will work with St. Clair if we have to, depending on the, the situation. Section eight, um, if, uh, provides a provision that is, if a district determines that it's safe to provide in-person instruction, that it will prioritize K-five students first. Uh, we chose as a district to offer both in-person and virtual as an option. We didn't, we didn't identify that, um, we're going to start off with elementary and work our way up. Other districts that chose to go a hundred percent virtually first, uh, you may see now that they are now operating, bringing in certain grade levels in first, particularly the elementary as a priority. That's because it's, it's part of the plan that's required. We are, we've already met that, that we have K-five as, as a priority. Section nine talks about the interaction, the two-way communication that must occur. There are many virtual options out there in each district. And a lot of it depended on the technology available and the resources available. When we planned our virtual option, we, one of the concepts we did look at and have the conversation was, what would it look like if we had just a virtual first-grade teacher or a virtual one teacher? The, the challenge we face as a smaller district is we don't have enough numbers to run it. So for instance, in one particular grade level, we might only have twelve virtual students and we might have a hundred or ninety-six to a hundred in-person students. So if we gave one teacher twelve virtual and the rest to be in-person, our class size would be extremely large. In working with the, the, the teachers' union as well as the collective group, we decided to opt for the virtual system that we have. We do recognize it is challenging. We do recognize that we, we've made improvements and we, some, uh, um, uh, changes. And, but what we ask our staff, I, I, I will stand by with my comments several months or several weeks ago, as well as tonight, uh, our staff stepped up and have done some remarkable thing. We have some improvements to make, no doubt. But what this does is depending on your virtual program, you have to confirm that you have a two-way communication occurring. Our program, every time students log in, there is an opportunity to have two-way communication every day with every teacher. Doesn't mean it will happen, but there's an opportunity there. In some cases, that there are some virtual, some districts who have a virtual program where the two-way communication is just once a week. And that's, that's the minimum, as you can see on here, that it's, uh, applied to it. We are, we are meeting that requirement every single day. It's every time a virtual student logs in, that there's an ability for two-way communication. So we will be exceeding the minimum seventy-five percent of the students that we talk to at least once a week, um, from that angle. Section ten, uh, the page right before it, the, the, the law required us to choose one of these, uh, Michigan Department of Education-approved assessments. We chose NWA, which is one that we've used in this district for many years. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Bartels to talk to you about the NWA assessment. Yeah, I, uh, we're choosing NWA and, uh, that's marked us for reading and mathematics. Um, I believe, um, at certain parts of this year or times of this year, this will be year eight of doing it. Um, we're, we're quite familiar with it. The, the norms have changed this year. Uh, I don't have those right in front of me, but they've been updated. The norms were, um, last done in two thousand fifteen. So the norms are even more accurate, um, and, and they're, they're national norms. They're not just Michigan norms, so it lets us know how we're doing, um, nationally. Um, we use those data points, um, for, in, in the data analysis. Each school, um, uses the data analysis for, for basically two things. Setting student goals and setting our instructional goals of where we are as a class and what do we need to address or where are holes, um, a- across the curriculum and then individually down to the student. We also use that data to identify, um, our at-risk. It's one data point, but i- it's a data point that we use to identify our at-risk students to get them the help and supports that they need, they may need. And it, and it's the, it's the growth, um, data that we look at from the beginning of the year, short-term goal with the students to the middle of the year and then the long-term goal, um, when, when we take it into the spring. This year's data, um, as Mr. Koshin talked about, we'll have it in another week or two when, when the testing window starts. It's more, more likely two weeks, um, when you do makeups and all that. We are able to test our virtual students. Um, this is the first year that the NWA testing, benchmark testing has been able to be done remotely, um, from the site. So we are able to test our virtual students and obviously our in, in-person students. The window opened up, uh, Monday and, or yeah, Monday of last week and a week ago. And there's three tests, the reading, the math, and then the, the, um, language usage, which is more, uh, grammar-related. And the window i- ends on the sixteenth of October. Gave ourselves enough time to make sure that we get it done. And then we are, um, going to communicate with obviously our students and our parents wh- where, what our baseline is and what, what, what our projected goals are. Um, and we're hope, have that accomplished by the end of October.
So, Keith, so the virtual students are going to test at the same time?
Correct.
It's because, because of the fact that we have our camera system, correct? That we're able to get it done as opposed to trying to, um, do the virtual kids different?
Yeah, so what, since we follow the same schedule, the, the math, um, NWA is taken with the math teacher. We do the reading comprehension test, um, with social studies because we try to, we, we try to push reading comprehension on all subjects. I mean, it's, it's, it's extremely important. But we do it in social studies, um, so that there's an emphasis on the informational tax of reading social studies and reading comprehension.
can be taught in social studies as much as it can be taught in English Language Arts. So we get our, our social studies teachers breaking down the data too, and then there are partners to help teach reading comprehension to students. And then the language usage, which is, you know, the grammar is done in the English classes. So it's actually done in the class. So like, say for instance, today if I had second hour of English, I would have taken the, in today was our day, I would have taken the language usage test second hour today. And then if you don't have enough time to finish it today, because the, each question builds on each other, gets more difficult, and then if you miss a few, then it backs off. We, you can pause it and then start it again tomorrow. So, and, and it's all done within those hours. Now, kids that completely miss, kids that completely miss, we, we try to get the teacher to catch them up the next day or two
Right.
without getting them too far behind. After that, Mrs. May starts pulling them down, and we try to pull them out of a special.
But our, our virtual kids don't miss a step in this testing process because of how, how we've set up our virtual, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Let's lead us into the, the last section, which is step 11, which after the assessment, you have to, by law, within 30 days of the test, report those results to parents. So Mr. Kooshen, let's start at the elementary school.
So the NWEA at the elementary, we started last week, and we should finish by the end of this week. So all students, face-to-face and virtual students have been tested. The teachers share two reports with parents. They share the student project reports and student profile. So it shows exactly where the student should be and shows where their goal, their targeted growth will be by the end of the year. What they have elementary, students always get their final score. So each time they take in the winter and then again in the spring, they can see how that score has increased. We also at the elementary, to follow the third-grade reading law, we use the NWEA fall results to look at what students need, the individualized reading improvement plans. So we use the NWA scores to give those plans also. So by conference time, parents and family members, guardians, will get the reports. And then if this student needs to be on IRE, the individual reading improvement plan, that'll be notified at conferences also. And with conferences being October 14th and 15th, that ensures that we reach that, that we're within that 30 days of testing and reporting to the parents.
Mr. Bartels?
During, during our advisory session, what we'll do is we'll have, each student will get a copy of their growth report, which will show their previous tests, how they've done the past two, three tests, and it shows the projection of, of what they're on. And what we do is we have a separate sheet where we ask our teachers to, during their advisory, to work with their students and to fill out a sheet, and, and the students kind of analyze their own data and see where they're at, they ask question or answer questions, and then they set personal goals. Well, what we're going to do this year is usually we hand them out during parent-teacher conferences, but since those are going to be virtual, it's going to be difficult this year. So what we're going to do is have that sheet that has the results of the NWA along with their, the student's own analysis of where they're at and answering some questions and goal-setting. Staple them together. Part of our goal-setting is that they take the goal-setting sheet home, go over it with their parents, have a conversation with their parents on how they're doing, and then sign it and return it. So we're going to have them sign it and return it. And our goal for this to be done is by November 2nd.
Mr. Kasal? You're muted.
All right, let's try that again. That's a rookie mistake, I'm sorry. So at the high school, we're also, we're in the middle of our NWEA fall cycle right now. We started at the beginning of last week, and we will hopefully, hopefully be done by the end of next week, minus a few of our makeups. Same things as the Lee in the, the middle school. Each teacher analyzes the classroom data to get a better feel for where their students are. We use one of our PD, so one of our Oakway PZ data. And we use that to really kind of address some of our individual needs and then see where our gaps may have been in instruction. It's going to be interesting especially to look at how things play out this fall because we did have such a long time off. See, you know, how that six months off really affected our, some of our students coming back and using that data to kind of plan to fill those gaps. And then we're going to mail ours home again because we don't have the ability to hand those out at conferences. Those are going to be mailed out, and the goal is to get those home by Halloween. Mailed out by Halloween.
So, I'm sorry, I just had a question. So the elementary school and the high school have already started the testing and doing it virtually, like how, just curious, how's that going? Like, has there been any issues with that? Has it?
I haven't had, you, you know what, that's an interesting question, Andrew. I have not had anyone come to me and say that it's not working. So I guess for me, no news is good news in a lot of cases, but I, I will do a check-in tomorrow, and if I have any issues, I will let you know.
Thank you.
Only minor issues we had at elementary, sometimes technology issues. Student was able, was not able to log on to NWEA, or they were kicked off. And all we do is we just suspend the test and restart it, making up, finish up the test. And so any of the minor little glitches, we're taking care of at the same time that they occurred.
Okay, great.
The last part, I'm assuming nothing with Mr. Bartels, we're good there? The last part is on page 19 of the plan, it talks about the GSRP, which is the Great Start Readiness Program. Basically, we are, we are following, because it's a county-wide, it's under the auspices of the county, I should say. We follow all guidance that the county puts out through the Great Start Readiness Program. Just as a side note, as of last Friday, we were the only district that had all of our slots filled, all 32 spots. So we have definitely a need and could have some more slots that they, we can get them allocated.
And also, if I could just add one thing, also with the GSRP, we found out today that we have the same allotted seats and the same funding. So funding is the same as it was last year.
Good. The, the page in there, the ISD, a lot of our CTE programs are in collaboration with other districts because many of us have similar programs. So over the, the summer and the director of the, Shannon Williams at the ISD pulled together some teachers, and there's various lessons in the different CTE courses that can be utilized with virtual lessons for students that are in CTE courses but virtual. Page 21 of the plan talks about the district assurances of what we're going to do. It has to be on the website, no later than October 1st. It has to be on the transparency report, we have to identify a benchmark assess, assessment. If we are doing virtually, what we're going to do to do that virtually, our partnership with the health department, all the different categories that we just went over. And finally, the last page is the signature page. It requires a superintendent's signature. It does not require the Board of Education. Tonight, I'm asking you just to accept the plan. If you look later down on that page, after you've accepted and I submit it to the ISD, Mr. DeValt, who's the county superintendent, has to approve the plan. Once he approves it, then we have every 30 days from that point, though it was changed in the budget that was passed by the legislature, so it's basically once a month, we have to do this. We have to have it on the agenda. As we talked last time, it would be the second board meeting of the month, that we would allow public comment to happen on our plan first, and then it would give the board and the administrators, if you want to change or redirect or make adjustments to the plan, that would be the time to do it and give us time to then amend the plan. That's it. That is the Extended Constituent Learning Plan. In essence, it was, it's a summary of our Return to Learning Plan for parents and the community members so they can get a snapshot of what assessments we're using, how we're measuring, how we're teaching, how we're using virtual, what is our virtual program, how we're helping students that are at risk or, or IEP, have IEPs. So that's any questions?
No, other than?
I have a question, but I do say that our plan is really sticking out. I have several friends in other districts, and I just hear a lot of complaints about they can't connect. The school isn't offering the technology, they're not offering the hotspots. So just want to give kudos because our plan is really working and it's showing in several different communities around us.
Well, appreciate that, and thank you. And we're not all, we, the three administrators and Mrs. Lashbrook and I, we've had many conversations. There are things that we're trying to improve on, there's bumps in the road. This is new for all of us. We did not, you know, none of us ever really had our career in virtual. So this is a learning experience, and, and the teachers, you know, for what we've asked them to do and doing, I, I am very proud of them. And like I said, we're making adjustments and improvements.
And to, to all of you that have to, like I said at the last meeting, I find this plan, continuing plan, whatever words they want to call it, I find it very curious that in the middle of all of this, this is now something extra that you have to do and that every month we have to follow along on this. I think it's, it's a bit much, but we don't have a choice, I guess. Okay, thank you. Moving on, first reading of Board of Education policies.
Yeah, I'm going to do what I did at the last meeting, I will go through the policies. There are quite a few of them. So if you just bear with me, and if there's at any time any questions, feel free to stop. There are some policies in the overview that are optional. Those are the ones that are highlighted, I believe it's in a teal or a lime or turquoise color. So I'm going to start with the first policy, 4201 Employee Ethics and Standard. As you look at the policy, it talks about how we expect employees to behave. There are no recommendations for the board to make changes. It's exactly what the, the Truun Policy Guidelines request. 4202 Children's Protective Services, talks about our reporting obligations and so forth. There are some options that I, I opted to, to recommend not adding those into the policy. Part of that is as we, we need to learn more about that and see what staff members would be responsible for some of these task force activities that they would be doing as far as curriculum-based instruction. You know, it's something that could easily be added at a later point, but wanted to make sure we have the policy that addresses it. 4203 deals with corporal punishment. Basically, there are no changes to this policy, based as we do not use corporal punishment. 4203, the administrative guidelines, this is what we would be providing all staff. By law, we have to provide staff alternative to corporal punishment. And so this would be a handout that would become part of the staff handbook as well as what we would send out to staff. 4204 deals with confidentiality of student information. Again, no, no recommended changes. It deals with, we are going to follow the state and federal laws, the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, well, the IDEA. So only those that are, that need to know regarding student information would be, would have it. 4205 deals with hiring and background check. We would post vacancies for seven days unless there's a different time period that's identified in the collective bargaining unit. Again, it talks about the background checks and what we, what we would do in a school, so there is no other changes to that one. 4206 deals with employee contracts. One of the policies that you are approving tonight authorized me to sign employee contracts on your behalf once they've been approved. Again, it gives the authority, what needs to be in a contract for employee. Number 11, the option is adding that prohibits from engagement in moral perpetuity and provisions that allow the board to void contract if, if someone does act in this way, in this case, an administrator, which is by, you know, as part of the, the law or the contract. And we already have that in our contracts right now. 4206 Employment Contracts, let's do the, let's continue, sorry. 4207 Third-Party Contracts of Non-Instructional Support Services. If the board may enter, it doesn't say it will, but it may enter into third-party contract for one or more non-instructional services. Currently, we do this for custodial services. Again, all the changes are the, what the, it consisted with the attorney. 4208 Applicants and Employee in Criminal Arrests and Charge, Charge and Conviction. What happens if someone's been criminally charged? What we do is salaries depending on, based on the charge, if they've been convicted, it's a process. This is pretty much by all, all law what we have to follow. There's not, there's no, there is no discretion on the board of this one. This where, where we put salaries in, may have to put into an escrow account based on the, the findings of the, of the court. 4209, if you recall, several years ago, this was a required policy boards had to adopt. It prohibits against abortion referrals or assistance by public school employees. This is just the policy saying that all district officials, including board members and district employees, shall not refer a student for, for abortion or assistance. 4210 talks about drug and alcohol free in the workplace. Again, this, we are a drug and alcohol-free district. Option D, when you get to that, deals with transportation. Since we provide our own, we're required to, there's a whole other regulations that transportation employees are, must follow. Again, it's just the, keeping it with, in what's required of us. 4211 Alcohol and Controlled Substances for Transportation Employee. Again, no transportation employee, and this also includes mechanics or anybody who's driving any type of vehicle should be under the influence. Again, there's no how we record it, if something happens, the pre-drug testing, all, we currently do all this anyways. 4212 Employee Assistance Program. District, to help with an employee who may have substance abuse or, or other problem that needs assistance, we provide that. We use CARE as our employee assistance program. It's free for all employees and their families. 4213 Talks about anti-nepotism policy, which means very favoritism relationships and so forth. Again, this is nothing new or nothing recommended there, it's a policy that we will, it doesn't prohibit relatives to working, but we can't put them in a position where they'll have direct supervision or the ability to evaluate over others. 4214 Outside Activities in Employment. Talks about what people would do off their, their own time. Drawing the line between what you do outside of work and what you do with your employment, and you have to be very clear on that, that, that line. Intellectual property, anything done with using district resources is property of the district. As I mentioned in one of the other policies last time, unless there's a separate agreement that's made, such as we have at the letter of agreement with the teachers' union. 4215 District Technology and Acceptable Use. Basically, it's saying you're going to use the technology for the purpose that it's intended for your job and not for personal use. Personal communication devices, it discourages using them except for emergency situations. You're not using them for inappropriate or unlawful activities. Social media. So use a social media while on district property or work hours or while using a district-owned device. Should not interfere with the educational purpose. It doesn't prevent the use of social media, but it also says it shouldn't be interfering with the instruction that we're trying to provide. 4218 Establishes a dress and appearance for all employees. If you recall, the difference between these policies and the previous ones is all district employee policies are pretty much grouped together and applied to everybody. Just says it's a professional dress and attire. Food service, custodial staff, mechanics obviously dressed to appropriately for their, their work that they're doing. Forty-two nineteen talks about attendance. The expectation is that there's a regular, reliable in-person attendance in order to provide the essential functions of the job. If there is an attendance issue, we follow the policies of the collective bargaining agreements or the individual employment contracts. Forty-two twenty talks about the use and disposal of district property and how we either employees may use or not use the district's property. Forty-two twenty-one is employment speeches, excuse me, employee speech. You know, basically, we're here to be teaching kids about the both parties that we're, we're to provide a neutral basis. Talking about curriculum, there are issues that are very, can be very controversial. We need to provide both points of view. You know, good example, this one, if we're talking about the upcoming election, we're providing both sides to, and not, should not be swaying students one way or the other, but providing them both options. Forty-two twenty-two talks about unauthorized work stoppages and strikes. Michigan law prohibits strikes, and it defines what that is. Forty-two twenty-three deals with an employee resignation. This allows the superintendent to accept a resignation or written or verbal on behalf of the board. It also defines it because of the unique situation of a superintendent being the board's technically only employee, that the board could accept the superintendent's written or verbal resignation. The board accepts that one. So otherwise, the superintendent accepts all of their employees. Forty-two twenty-four talks about personnel files and payroll, what's in payroll records, what's in personnel files, and the ability for employees and third parties to have access to those, that information. With me so far?
Yep.
Still awake.
All right. This is exciting. This is, this is the.
I can't believe I missed the last meeting on this fun.
Oh, yeah.
You can watch it on YouTube. Forty-two oh, or excuse me, forty-three oh one defines what a non-exempt staff member is. Basically, I took out the option of calling them at-will employees and just calling them non-exempt employees. Forty-two oh three deals with minimum wage and overtime, how that's calculated and that we're required to pay it based on the state and federal laws. Forty-three oh three deals with compensatory time. If someone does hit an overtime option, what are our options to provide either payment or time and a half, time off in, in replace the payment? Forty-three oh four deals with how we're going to time, are we, we record the hours worked of an employee and the process of providing that, that information to process payroll. Forty-three oh five was a relatively new act. It was put a year ago, I believe, last April. It's the Michigan Paid Medical Leave Act. There's a couple of options. The options that I've chosen are the ones that we currently do. So for instance, for those that are eligible for this time, we use the period of July one to June thirtieth. We front-load their hours at the beginning of the year. In most cases, the collective bargaining agreements exceed the numbers here, but this would be more for non-union employees such as if a childcare worker, preschool, lunch aids and so forth that were required by law to provide time. So everything in here is what we currently do. Forty-three oh six talks about assignments and transfers. Basically, the board is authorizing the superintendent to assign and transfer non-exempt staff to meet the needs of the, of the district. Again, if there's a collective bargaining agreement that defines that process, we have to follow the collective bargaining agreement. Forty-three oh seven talks about the evaluation or performance evaluation of non-exempt staff. Again, unless there's a collective bargaining agreement. Forty-three oh, forty-three oh eight deals with recall and reduction of staff and recall of non-exempt staff. In here, it's, it's pretty much the process that we have done. Recall for non-exempt staff is a twelve-month period commencing on when we reduce the workforce. Forty-three hundred, or excuse me, forty-three oh nine deals with how we would discipline and terminate a non-exempt staff and is consistent with our current practice. Now, forty-four oh one deals with professional staff, which are more your teaching staff. Though this excludes administrators because in last, once, our last board meeting, we dealt with administrator and superintendent. This is more on the teaching staff, who, who is defined as considered a professional staff. Forty-four oh two, again, this is how we place and transfer teachers. Again, unless there's something specific in the collective bargaining agreement. Forty-four oh three there it is, talks about the evaluation, performance evaluation. All of these criterias are what's required in the current law, section twelve forty-nine of the evaluation, which we, our current evaluation includes all of these. Forty, forty-four oh four talks about performance-based compensation. This is something we, we talked about the last couple of years. We didn't implement it this past year because of the shutdown, but the revised school code twelve fifty requires that there be some type of compensation based on job performance. Forty-four oh five talks about how we reduce, in this case, teachers, professional staff, and how we recall them. Again, these are our current practices. You'll see there's one description on about the third or fourth page in. It's a letter, I believe it's six. I'm trying to figure out the, this is if we have ties. If we have a reduction of staff and we have two people that are equal, how we go about reducing the staff if they're a tie. And there's some performance or sections of the evaluation that we would look at, which is our current practice. Also, recall for a policy is twelve months, which is the recommendation, as you can see in the highlighted part from the attorney's office. Forty-four oh six, professional improvement sabbaticals. The board has a discretion of granting sabbaticals. In this case, per teacher, there is language in the teacher contract that addresses sabbaticals. Though in my experience here, we've not had a sabbatical come forward towards the district. We apply that language as well as the collective bargaining agreement. Forty-four oh seven, discipline. This would be how we would discipline a professional staff should we ever have to based on the seriousness of the offense. There's no recommendation from the attorney to, it's pretty much outlined based on the Michigan School Code. Termination of professional staff, there is three categories here. You have probationary teachers, tenured teachers, and non-teaching professionals. Basically, on probationary teachers, the way the law is written now, there's a lot of leeway to terminate a probationary teacher, tenured teacher. There's more of a process that would come before the board. We'd have to file tenure charges. But the section C, unless otherwise provided by the collective bargaining agreement, non-teaching professionals would be your speech and language social workers that do not require a teaching certificate and do not fall under the teacher tenure act. In our teacher's contract, we address this in that contract. So there's protocol, how we would follow that. Forty-four oh nine is a non-renewal, and again, it addresses probationary teachers for non-renewal certificate, or a non-renewal if we do not, we choose not to keep them on board, as well as a non-renewal of a, of a teacher that falls under the teacher tenure act. So basically, the four thousands were all employees. We are now getting into the five thousands, which are all students. Fifty-one oh one, which deals with student expression. There is a balance between student speech and the expression of rights. So it identifies what students may or may not be disciplined for, for basically freedom of speech and what, what is acceptable and what's not. Fifty-one oh two talks about lockers. There is, this policy identifies that there is no expectation of privacy. Lockers belong to this district. Their students use them on a temporary basis, and the stu, the district has every right to search a locker at any time. Search and seizure, fifty-one oh three, deals with if we have reasonable search and suspicion. It talks about things that are absolutely prohibited by policy based on a search and seizure. Age of majority is the policy that the students when they're at age eighteen or older or legally emancipated, this is what happens. I'm identifying what's in our policy. Fifty-one oh five, collaboration with outside entities. This basically talks about that there's nothing that prohibits us from collaborating with outside agencies such as the, the police department, so long as we follow the policies identified by the board. And we do that currently already. We oftentimes call on the police to, to help us with certain cases or situation, whether it's a family issue or a student issue. Fifty-two oh one, investigation arrests and other law enforcement contacts. Again, it just references that we want to maintain a, a positive working relationship with law enforcement while protecting our students' rights. We are the advocates for our students in the, in the absence of their parents. There's a little more discretion on, you'll see in some of the policies here that we, we aren't acting as an agent of the police. We act independently of the police. There's oftentimes investigations that go side by side that we have to conduct our own investigation, and if it involves the police, they would have to conduct theirs. Fifty-two oh two talks about unlawful discrimination, harassment, and retaliation against students that is strictly prohibited and that we will be putting into our handbook what happens if a student feels that they've been discriminated or harassed. You'll see in here, there's two people that are listed as the official that someone would report to. It's myself and Tammy. It's a male and a female in the policy. It defines how the investigation will happen, the timeline, et cetera. A whole lot on here, so a lot of this is pretty standard in terms of what we currently do. Fifty-two oh three deals with hazing, defines what hazing is, and basically the policy is we prohibit hazing. Fifty-two oh four talks about a student appearance and dress code, what would be included in the handbook such as pretty much everything that we can identify. As you know, the handbook comes to you usually yearly, lately it's been in August. Basically, the policy directs the superintendent to develop and publish the appropriate dress code regulations consistent with the policy from the board. Student handbooks, that we will have student handbooks, the superintendent and, or designees will ensure that these are developed, published, and regularly updated. Student discipline, all of the next set of policies, fifty-six, fifty-two oh six, which is student discipline, fifty-two oh six A, which is due process, fifty, excuse me, fifty-two oh six B, students with disability, fifty-two oh six C, reinstatement from expulsions, fifty-two oh six D, which is enrollment following misconduct, and fifty-two oh six E, which is suspension from class or activity. All of these are exactly the same policy that we currently have. If you recall, when Neola had their policy, we chose to adopt TRUEN because we follow a lot of the TRUEN policies and checklist procedures, especially when it comes to expulsion hearings that come before the board. There's a checklist that TRUEN follows to make sure we're number one in compliance with the law. So they are all identical to what we currently have in place. Fifty-two oh seven is an anti-bullying policy. We prohibit the conduct and how they report the incident. Responsible school official, there's some designations that we have to identify. Some of these are the recommendation, like for instance, if you look at number or letter F, it's recommended that they use the superintendent for liability reasons in that case and so forth. There is, if there's a, we have to post and public, publicize the policy, which we do in our handbook. There's some optional policies. I chose to struck them out. It's something that I think we need to look, potentially look at and how we would implement that. Who would be responsible for that, et cetera. But currently, they're not in our policy now.
Brian?
Yes?
Where it says at the beginning of that, before adopting this policy, the board must hold a public hearing. The hearing may be part of a regular board meeting. Is that what this is?
This would be, yes. This would be, this would be that hearing.
Okay.
Fifty, fifty-two oh eight, acceptable use and internet safety policy. The students are to use the technology. It's a privilege, not a right, and then it's governed by policy thirty, thirty-one sixteen. Basically, again, if a student fails to follow the policy of the acceptable use, that there may be discipline or a loss of technology privileges. Fifty-two oh nine deals with cell phones in school. The option that we have allows for cell phones based on, it's a broad policy because we can then adjust it to fit the, the age level of students. We typically use a red, red, yellow, green policy. Areas of the building that it's green, students can use their cell phones. Oftentimes, in the secondary class at the high school, there's more classrooms that allow cell phones in them. At the elementary to middle school, it may be only allowed before, after school for communication with parents. Fifty-two ten is, it's an interesting one. I did not, I learned a lot on this policy, but this is about GPS tracking devices with audio surveillance. There is current technology that allows for, if a student has a, a phone, that a parent could put a GPS tracking device and be able to turn on the audio features remotely from their phone. It's more of a safety mechanism for kids, particularly the student, you know, students not answering and so forth, the parent could turn on that GPS. Well, it allows students to have this ability, the ability, it prohibits the ability for the, the audio recording to be turned on. So as technology evolves, this is one that, that policy evolves with it. Emergency use of seclusion and restraint. We adopted several, probably about two years ago now, the Michigan Department of Education's policy for the use of emergency seclusion and restraint. We provide training, and Mrs. Lashbrook works with the staff to annually review their training on if we have to restrain a child, the proper way to do it. CPI, I believe it's the acronym that's used on.
Is that for all, all staff or just special education staff?
It's, it's for administrators, special ed staff. I believe parapros, I don't know if Mrs. Lashbrook's still on, on it, but I believe also she brings in some of the parapros based on the the uniqueness. We have some that may be dealing with a one-on-one student that may have some outbursts that we may have to use it. We want to make sure we're, we're using something that's been approved and, and that they annually review the training. But it is not for all staff.
Okay, only because it says in this part that all district personnel receive training?
There is a, safe schools that they all receive, as part of the online video, but the training that I was referencing is more of
CPI is just special.
The actual in-person training, if you will.
Okay.
They all, they all receive the safe school, which is a video training course regarding it.
Okay.
Fifty-two twelve talks about registered sex offenders that, you know, if someone, you know, it just talks about our, I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank on this one. How we're going to address it. There's a student that's listed on the registered sex offender, that we may have to develop a plan to exclude the student or their interaction with others. District reserves that right. So it's, it's a broad policy, hopefully, knock on wood. We will never have to use this policy or have to implement this policy. Personal protection orders against, orders against students. Sometimes we have students that have personal protection orders against other students. And this is how we're going to act and, and if we do actually have a student that has a personal protection order against someone else. I would ask that you cross out fifty-three oh one, and I apologize, it was still on the list. I just realized as I'm going through. This I want to bring back to you because there were some policy changes in the, at the county level. Last year, the county all went to one system, but there was also some changes in what's considered truancy. But there was also some changes in what's considered truancy and and when we report it, and it depends on the ages students. So I will bring this policy back to you. So fifty-three oh one, I'm take I'd like to take it off the list. And again, I apologize when I met with the administrators, Mrs. Bulwark and the I didn't, Mrs. Lashbrook, I did not take that off. Fifty-three oh fifty-three oh two talks about enrollment in kindergarten. You must be five. A child must be five honor before December first enrolled in kindergarten. We can do waivers. It's now a September first deadline, but we can do waivers if it's after September first, which we typically do. Fifty-three oh three student enrollments and withdrawals. This is just a process of students enrolling in our district and how they would withdraw, what they need to enroll in the district. Again, there's no discretion on that one. It's pretty much required by law. Fifty-three oh four, which is non-public school students and part-time attendance. Basically, this talks about sometimes districts will have non-public school students get part of their instruction through public school. And a couple of years ago, we had the art music PE that was over at some of our parochial schools in the town. And so we would send teachers over to provide instruction. It also talks about what they have access to. Other than required for IEPs and special ed, you know, we're not required to provide transportation to part-time students. We do provide transportation to a non-public students that are full-time attendance students. Fifty-three oh five talks about a school of choice. Again, that's all the law required of our, what we have to follow for school of choice, when we can refuse someone for school of choice. Fifty-three oh six talks about foreign students that we can accept or deny enrollment. In the past, we've had some foreign exchange students and what they would need in terms of F-1 visa or J-1 visas. Fifty-three oh seven is homeless students. The contact name in here does fall under the administrator, but it's typically Mrs. Lara Tunda is the one that deals with the day-to-day, but it has to fall under a department area. So but all of this, there's no recommended changes other than putting the name inside the policy. It's exactly what's required by law for homeless students. Protection of pupil rights. Basically, A talks about survey evaluations that are given by third party that will want to protect our students' rights and privileges. They're recommending that we do have the policies regarding we adopt section C, which is the policy of collecting students' personal information for marketing. We do release directory information. And there are some some organizations that we do release stuff as like military recruiting, post-secondary education. Some of these are required by law. But what what is considered personal identifiable information, et cetera, for marketing, we will not distribute surveys that receive that that issue that. Fifty-three oh nine talks about student access and directory information. Again, this is all the stuff that is available for directories. So if someone would request, there's a form that we put in our registration packet that if a parent does not want their student's information in the directory, they can respond. You may be asking some of this, such as why would we ever have weight and height class? That's dealing with athletics. We give that list and rosters, you know, from a wrestling aspect, we provide that information. However, a parent refused to provide and sign that form, we would not be able to provide it, which may prevent them from participating. But honors degrees, we publish in the newspaper oftentimes or release, et cetera. Directly information. Fifty-four oh one deals with parent and guardian involvement education. It's strongly encouraged that parents and guardians are involved, and it just gives some broad topics on what they can and can't do in terms of aspects from the curriculum, from reviewing textbooks and curriculum, involved with assessments, et cetera. Item five is an optional. It's completely optional for the board, but we typically have this in place. We do some parent involvement conduct, particularly with our Title I building that identify what the parents do, what students do, what teachers do, et cetera, as a way of all working together, ultimately for the benefit of the student. Fifty-two oh fifty-four oh two, excuse me, communication with parents and guardians. Again, it's just stressing the importance of communication if a student's failing and so forth. We use telephone calls, personal contact, as well as any other mouth for deemed appropriate to make contact with parent. Rights of non-custodial parents. Again, it defines what they can and can't do. Again, any court documents supersede a lot of what we do. Fifty-four oh four talks about we provide free textbooks, materials, charging of fees and fine what we can and can't charge. We are allowed to charge fees, fines for replacement or lost or damaged or stolen stuff. We have to offer insurance, particularly with laptops. Very, very broad and again, what we currently do. Fifty-four oh five is a title one and parent family, parent and family engagement policy. We have to have a policy regarding it. Again, it's similar to what we currently have. Fifty-four oh six, which is title one funds, basically it's saying we're using title one funds to supplement, not supplant, which we currently do with all of our title one program. Fifty-four oh seven instructional programs and curriculum development that we have a process to develop those instructional programs. A lot of this is directing the superintendent to be responsible for doing district-wide planning, curriculum, instruction, assessment, et cetera. Fifty-four oh eight, it was left, it's a placeholder. They do not have the policy in there. They have something that they're working on, but it's not been released. But they want to keep this as a placeholder for that spot. Fifty-four oh nine academic credits and graduation. Again, these are the current graduation requirements taken right from the current course catalog. Just his personal curriculum that we need as well as how you earn credit. Fifty-four ten commencement. It talks about who is eligible to receive a diploma. And it's recommended that we use the language that's underlying there. It defines the diplomas, who authorized it, basically. On behalf of the board, I issue the diploma. But as a board member, you ultimately are the one bestowing on the students the confirmation or graduation. So you would be able to, you actually would be distributing the diplomas if you so to. Again, that's our current practice. Fifty-four eleven talks about how we retain, promote, retain and place students. Again, nothing changed there. There's a issues to address with the read-by-grade-three law that was passed a couple of years ago. Fifty-four twelve talks about class rank. It basically establishes criteria for honorable. The superintendent designees establishes for honorable and other academic recognition, which we currently do in our student handbook. That's fifty-four twelve. Fifty-four thirteen is student recognition regarding graduates. We use the seventh semester as our determining factor for the top 10, which is basically the end of the first semester of their senior year, if someone attended all four years. Fifty-four fourteen, we have some students that receive a completion certificate. They don't receive a diploma because they're going on to a possibly a coursework or a program that if they had a diploma, they would be completed. And so this defines currently what we have with our certificate of completion. The law allows vocational readiness certificates and academics, which we are going to be looking at because it's basically allows you to give three certificate of completion options for students that do not receive diplomas. Currently, we just received issue the one, which is letter the last one, but we will be looking at the the other two. Summer school that is, it says the board may offer it. And if we do offer it, they have to establish the policies and procedures for implementing a summer school program. Fifty-four sixteen, I believe we're getting here and coming to the end.
Maybe.
Maybe it is fifty-four sixteen. Homebound instruction, hospitalization. If we have someone that is homebound, it runs through the Department of Student Support Services that we provide instruction. Oftentimes, a teacher or someone goes out to the hospitals or a home to provide that instruction. Fifty-four seventeen talks about homework. Again, this is an optional policy, but basically we establish appropriate guidelines for homework based on the age of students and the parents. And you'll see in reference in some of the policies, the light struck it out because we don't currently do it. Some districts choose a night that they might have designated as a family night in the community. In this case, it might be on Wednesdays, which as a district-wide, you would not do any homework on certain nights. We currently do not have that in our community. Fifty-four eighteen talks about grades. We will establish grading guidelines, which comes before the board and be in the administrative guidelines to make sure that the grades are consistently reported among staffs. Fifty-four nineteen talks about reading assessment instruction in K three. This was a recent law that was passed regarding if we don't have kids that are not or have reading concerns or difficulty, that we notify the parents. Mr. Akoshin mentioned HIrips, which are individual reading educational plans that we use. Fifty-four twenty deals with sex education. We currently only provide instruction in HIV and communicable diseases. We do not provide sex education. If we do, all of this other stuff we would have to put in place, such as the board would have to establish a sex advisory board, and there's certain members that are on it. So we currently do not provide other than what's required by law. Fifty-four twenty-one deals with workplace learning experiences. If we have students that are it's achieving workplace learning, this is the policies that we follow, that they may be paid or unpaid. And students may be getting granted credit. Fundraising, basically student fundraising or subject review approval of the superintendent designate. Ninety-nine percent of it is the administrator overseeing, whether it's the principal or whether it's the director of athletics. Fifty-five oh two deals with student government. That is a purpose of student government is provide leadership opportunities for them to explore the democratic process and talks about and what a student government would be supervised by a staff member, et cetera, which we currently have student government in our middle school, high school. And I am drawing a blank if we have it at the elementary school, so forgive me. Bulletin boards and other student posting, what can and can't be on bulletin boards that are appropriate. It needs to be a pre-approved. It can't be offensive, vulgar, or violate any policies. Fifty fifty, I said fifty-four oh three, I apologize, fifty-five oh three. Fifty-five oh four talks about still school-sponsored publications and production, school newspapers, yearbooks, plays. They do fall under, we're trying to teach students journalistic standards and professionalism and acting. There is some regulations that that schools could prohibit certain certain items, such as vulgarity, profanity, and it's unsuitable for the school environment. Fifty-five oh five talks about school attendance on days of scheduled activities. Basically, if you are in any type of extracurricular activity, the expectation is you are at school the day of the activity in order to participate in the activity that occurs after school or in the evenings. Fifty-five oh six deals with field trips, getting parent permission, the supervision. Again, consistent with our current policy. Extracurricular activities fifty-five oh seven deals with overseeing those extracurricular activities, advisors, coaches. If they're doing fundraising activities, they have to follow the the board policy and apply with those fundraiser, the fundraising policy, a policy. Fifty-five oh eight extracurricular and athletic field trips. These will be published procedures for students transporting to and from extracurricular activity, whether it's through bus or personal situation. Student fails, you know, they go away on a trip and they're misbehaving, it could prevent them from it could allow them to be issued discipline or exclusion from future trips. Public appearance of school groups. This, I guess, would primarily be for I guess it could be for anything, but if you think about it from a band or and so forth. It talks about what students cannot be participating. So for in the student groups may not participate at political rallies or events or religious ceremonies and so forth. So you're trying to again, they can, they can participate, but it just prevents from being one religious or one political affiliation. Student initiated non-curricular at clubs. This allows students that may volunteer for forum clubs that are not in the curriculum or in the like schedule Bs, which we've had, and it just talks about the guidelines of how we would approve those clubs, having a staff member be present and supervising students, et cetera. Fifty-five eleven, secret organization. It prohibits secret organizations. And I guess the one that I'm probably dating myself is Dead Poets Society. You can't have a secret organization. Fifty-six oh one deals with special education that we will follow the special education laws. Fifty-six oh two deals with independent educational evaluations. Oftentimes a parent will request an IEE or an independent educational evaluation. It defines our process for honoring that or denying that. Fifty-six oh three deals with section five oh four. Again, it's a policy that we will honor five oh fours and have them. Fifty-six oh four, students assistance process. We have students that need assistance for social, emotional, behavioral needs. We have a process to five oh forwards or IEPs to give them the assistance they need. Student abuse and neglect. This deals with mandated reporters. Again, that's all law. Student illnesses and injuries talks about if students are showing signs and so forth, what a parent's responsible as far as reporting that to the school. Fifty-seven oh three deals with medication, administering medication in the district, over the counter, asthma inhalers, et cetera. Fifty-seven oh four deals with insurance, would provide students with and parents the option of providing encouragement and make sure they have healthcare insurance and coverage, particularly if they're playing athletics or other activities. Emergency anaphylaxis. The ability to be able to use those based in emergency situations. We are each building gets two every year from the state, so we may have to use those, and that allows us to. The district will provide a training if we use the controlled opiate antagonists. This is recently a pass by the law. And it just again allows us if we are using it to to use it. Fifty-seven oh seven talks about school wellness policies required by law that we have a school wellness policy that oversees the food and marketing, a wellness committee for staff, oversight, nutritionist programs, et cetera. Fifty-seven oh eight, do not resuscitate orders. If we have a student that has a do not resuscitate order, we will comply with that order. Fifty-seven oh nine talks about lice, nits, and bedbugs. It's our policy of how we would exclude students or what we do in case we have that situation. Fifty-seven eleven talks about toilet training for students, unless it's addressed in the IEP or five oh four plan, the basis students need to be toilet trained. Fifty-seven twelve talks about construct or concussion awareness. Again, it's a lot of this is athletics, but we do provide this information with all registration because it could happen at recess or in playground or gymnasium or gym classes. Fifty-seven thirteen, we're nearing the light at the end of the tunnel. So talks about immunizations and communicable diseases. Basically, it's what's required in order to register students. Basically, we often refer to a CBC. We do not allow that to be on district property. We prohibit CBC. Fifty-eight oh one, we are a closed campus. It's the policy that identifies it forms campus. Fifty-eight oh two that talks about the district may provide transportation. If we do, we will establish bus stops, et cetera, which we currently do. Routes, et cetera. We communicate that to parents. Fifty-eight oh three talks about students driving and parking. Again, they they may drive on campus. It's not a right. It could be revoked. Work permits that we will issue work permits in accordance to the state law. That's fifty-eight oh four. Fifty-eight oh five talks about studio audio and video recording. It prohibits recording in students and so forth. It does permit some of the activities and identifies what is and is not allowed. Fifty-eight oh-six, this is consistent with their current policy. We do allow recordings of a meeting so long as it's notified ahead of time. Both sides get a copy of the recording. Oftentimes at an I E P meeting, a parent or an advocate may bring a tape recorder. Fifty-eight oh-seven deals with we will display flags and say the pledge of allegiance every day. And fifty-eight oh-eight, it will be left intentionally blank, and it deals with family night, which I referenced too early. That's everything.
Brian, you skipped over fifty-seven ten.
Seven. Fifty-eight. Seven-ten?
Yeah, five, seven, zero.
Student suicide prevention.
Oh, I apologize. I did, I apologize. Um. It talks about student suicide prevention that we that we will intervene if we have a crisis and a team and so forth. What's crossed out of that is district will provide age-appropriate instruction and professional development about suicide prevention. At this point, we are not at a point to implement that. I do intend to bring that back at a later date, once I have the opportunity to talk to the social workers and identify what would this look like at all levels and so forth. Because with the rise in suicide prevention or suicides, excuse me, especially in the pandemic that we're in and we've seen an increase on, it's important, we need to address this, but at this point, I don't have, we don't have a current program or instruction that is currently aligned to this policy. But I would be bringing that at a later point to remember. Sorry about that.
I was paying attention, see. All right.
I guess as you keep reading on this, during the time, if you have any question or any concerns, let me know. I can bring it back. And like I said, at the next meeting, the intent would be to approve the policies. And if there's any policies that we need further study on, we can, we can table it and bring it back at the following meeting.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Next is a portion of our meeting for public comment. It is the part of the meeting that if there is anyone in the public who would like to address the board, they can do so. You have three minutes to speak. While this is not a question and answer period, if there is an issue that you would like an answer to, normally we have you write your name and number, and someone gets back with you. But you can send your questions to me at m teltow@richmond.k12.m i.us, and someone will get back with you. Is there anyone who would like to address the board this evening?
I believe you have the ability to unmute yourselves if you would like to address the board.
Go ahead, Mrs. Ranger.
Oh, okay. Thank you. My name is Teresa Ranger. I'm the R A president for teachers' union. And I just want to take a minute to, to say how much the R A appreciates the positive labor relations that we experienced with Mr. Wamsley while we were bargaining the teacher's contract. I feel it's a very fair and equitable contract for membership. And I sincerely thank Mr. Wamsley for working diligently with us throughout the whole summer to get an agreement. We got letter of understanding agreed on, and then we also reached a settlement for our bargaining agreement. So a big thanks to him and also a thanks to the board for all of your support. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Oh, yeah, there's a hand raised here. Jill.
Jill Mancheck there, it looks like.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sure can.
Okay, hi. My name is Jill, and I'm the parent of two students. I have a first grader and a fifth grader. And I want to start by thanking the board and administrators and staff that worked hard all summer on our district's back-to-school plan. I believe we have one of the best plans in our area, and I'm grateful to be a part of the district, of a district that listened to the parents and provided a plan that I feel is in our children's best interest, offering both an in-person, full-time school and a virtual option. So families are able to decide what is best for their students. Personally, for us, virtual was not an option, and the deciding factor on whether or not to send them in person was knowing our kids would only be wearing a mask for a short amount of time each day. The past few weeks have been great. The kids are excited to go to school. They're incredibly happy to be with their friends and teachers. I'm incredibly disheartened at the latest E O requiring all students cannot wear a mask in the classroom, stating, quote, "It is crystal clear that COVID-19 can be deadly to younger children," end quote. However, on the Michigan.gov website, there are no deaths shown for ages twenty and under. Additionally, on the CDC website, the recovery rate was recently updated, and for those twenty and under, there's a ninety-nine point nine-nine-seven percent survival rate and ninety-nine point five percent survival rate for those seventy and under. It is heartbreaking to think about these little kids in masks all day. The data on our own state's website does not support this. While we realize everyone's situation is different, shouldn't this be left up to each family to decide what is best for their student? In theory, masks may limit the spread of germs if worn by those that are sick. However, masking healthy children that have a higher probability of not wearing it properly, touching multiple surfaces and then touching their face with, which potentially brings more germs to their face, seems like it will do more harm than good. If we can all walk into a restaurant and take off our mask, our children should be able to sit at their desk without a mask. I support your current back-to-school plan that does not require young children in masks. Is there anything we can do as parents to support the continuation of that plan?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
Any other hand?
Hi.
We got one in the corner here.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Oh, my name is Corey Misko. I'm here to ask you, beg you to be courageous enough to defy Executive Order one eighty-five. The state gathered twenty-nine people this summer to create the back-to-school roadmap, and Richmond Community Schools gathered seventy-one to create theirs. Neither of those groups made this recommendation. As parents, we made the decision to send our children to school without masks in the classroom. I know many parents came to Richmond through school of choice because of our mask policy. We were proud of the decision Richmond made to put our children's health and mental well-being first by only requiring masks in common areas. There is new data to support this change, especially within our own community. We put our trust in you every day when we send our kids to your buildings. Please value our trust, our voices, and do not force masks on our children for seven hours a day. Seven hours. A young child should never have to wear a mask for hours on end. They need to see faces for development, both socially and academically. They also will most likely not wear them correctly, touch them constantly, chew on them, et cetera, all of which is not safe for their health. You may feel as though your hands are tied, but someone has to stand up for our children. Richmond Community Schools can do better by our kids. We do not have to fall in line. Please consider not following E O one eighty-five. And if you feel compelled to follow her order, please allow parents to write their own exemption. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Marnie Scutchfield. I have two kids. I have a second grader and a seventh grader. My seventh grader is currently receiving I E P services. And I guess I want to start by letting you know that I think that Richmond has the best teachers in the area by far, bar none. I think that what they are doing, what they've been asked to do this year is nothing short of a miracle. And I want to congratulate them. I wish I could thank them all in person to tell them what I think is just so far beyond what they should be asked to do at this point. My biggest concern at this point is in regards to my second grader. My seventh grader seems to be kind of coming along. My second grader is the one that I'm the most concerned with. She's in the elementary school. I am not sure why we thought a blanket of a mix of both virtual and in-person was going to work for all grades. I don't understand why the elementary isn't the focus of maybe we shouldn't have both in-person and virtual kids together in one classroom. I think it is asking so much of the elementary teachers to split their time, to try to split their time between watching their classroom full of kids versus their handful of students that are virtual. I've sat down, I work from home, so I do have the luxury of at least being around my kids when they are attending school, but I cannot sit next to them all day long and help them. So things that I've noticed, my daughter in elementary school has almost three hours of downtime. And when I say downtime, I mean time not in front of a teacher. Her teacher is off camera, not in the classroom, whatever. Three hours of a seven-hour day, significant, right? She has no face-to-face time with other pupils. She has no ability to participate in collaboration with other students. She is muted all of the time. Her teacher is off camera significantly. He only has two camera views while he is in the classroom. His ability to show and educate while on camera is perhaps holding up a piece of paper saying, this is the assignment, and then clipping it to the board. So if you don't get it in those, in that little snippet of time, you're not getting it because you can't see the board, the little piece of paper that's posted on the board instead of it being projected. He doesn't do that, and I'm not sure if he has the option or not. I'm just very concerned overall. So I have these concerns for her, but I also am very concerned about the educators as well. Are we doing anything to support them? They have got to be emotionally, mentally exhausted, not to mention the impact from the extra amount of work. I'm just overall concerned. I don't understand why we didn't dedicate, and I know Mr. Wamsley's already tried to explain to us why we didn't dedicate a single teacher to each grade. But I happen to know in the second grade, at the time, I was told, I think it was by Mr. Wamsley, perhaps by Mr. Coshin, that there were twenty second graders. That's enough for a classroom. And more specifically, why are there seven virtual kids in my daughter's class, but other teachers have none? Or one? Or two? Are we seriously expecting this teacher to be able to give twenty in-person students attention and seven virtual students? She can go an entire day without him even acknowledging her that she's there. I'm very, very concerned about this. She's not going to get the growth that you want her to. She's not. I mean, there's a litany of things. Hotspot issues. We've got the laptop. Her laptop is damaged, and I can't get a new one because there's no resources. We've got lots of great stuff coming down the pike here from this, this bond, and I know that we can't do teacher salaries, but like, why does she have a damaged laptop? She's a virtual student. She shouldn't have one. She should have a great laptop. So I guess I'd appreciate the effort. It's, it's just not what I expected. I had low expectations, and they've just been kind of even more low than I expected. And I find no fault in the teachers whatsoever. What are we doing to support them? What are we doing to help this teacher become better at this virtual environment? Because my daughter's not getting an education the way she deserves. This teacher's being asked to do too much. The parents, I mean, everybody's making sacrifices here, and some of them are just too big, I think. That's it.
Thank you, Marnie. Anybody else?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Brian Peebles. I have a third grader and a kindergartner, and I'll be short. I just want to echo and applaud the, the comments from the two parents about the governor's orders to wear masks. And I know you said this isn't a question and answer, but I hope that at some point their concerns are brought up in some kind of discussion or I don't know if you're able to answer one small question of, does there, is there a plan at some point for some kind of board meeting or some kind of forum for parents to discuss their concerns about elementary school kids wearing masks all day long with staff and actually have an open, candid conversation about what Richmond can and can't do or what options there are? That's all, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I also would like to take a moment to applaud the educators in our district. They are juggling a huge task right now of educating virtual and face-to-face students. This is a task that the school board put upon them with no incentives, no pay raises, as far as I'm aware. They are juggling two different jobs at one time. Many districts are not requiring that of their teachers. And Macomb County, Richmond School, the school teachers are one of the lowest paid. So I applaud them, and I want to thank them for all of their efforts that they have done. As Mr. Wamsley said, they went above and beyond, and I applaud them and pat them on the back. I secondly thank the school board for looking at the mask new initiatives that are coming forward and making it what's best possible task for Richmond schools and students. Although the bond is on an issue right now, and probably the least of our concerns where our elementary students' health and well-being are most important, I do invite our board members to sit in the elementary parking lot during drop-off and pickup times. I hope you can find the money to enlarge the parking lot now. It was in the original bond plan, and I don't believe the elementary families understood it as adding only nine parking spots. As Mr. Wamsley had mentioned, the elementary population continues to grow. This means that there are more families and vehicles commuting to the school for before and after-school events. I'm sure more than nine families have enrolled to our awesome Willa Lee Elementary School. This evening, it was mentioned multiple times that there is room to expand the parking lot later. There is green grass right there with, it was clearly marked that that time could come. Similar to the softball diamond, do not waste the taxpayers' dollars in grass, topsoil, drainage, and labor now to demolish that green space later, when you realize you added very little space for us, the elementary student parking lot. Thank you for all of your time and efforts. I know this is a job that is not thanked often enough, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I just want to say to, just again, all the parents that spoke, if you can just please make sure you send your phone numbers to me, to my email address, because either I or Mr. Wamsley will be getting back with you regarding your questions. And just, just quick to Mr. Peebles, your, your question about whether there would be a forum and that, this, these, the issues about the mask wearing and all that obviously has just come up in the last few days. So that would be something that Mr. Wamsley and I will talk about and the rest of the board. Not this evening, obviously, but your, your issues are noted. And if you can just leave your phone number for me on my email, we will get back with you. Okay, moving on, superintendent legislative update.
Okay, I would like to start with the administrative team to talk about the start of school, both the things that have been going well, things that they are proud of. Because like I said, we've been back now for, this will be our fourth, beginning of our fourth week. We have a lot to, we're just glad to be back, number one, with kids and, and so forth. So I will start with, do I go first, start at the elementary, Mr. Coshin? Perfect.
Absolutely. All right, first, you know, with the COVID-19 and the construction at the elementary that has presented some unique challenges. So first, I want to thank all the parents and staff. We've collected some input on some of our new procedures, particularly the arrival and the dismissal procedures. So we continue to, you know, take a look at those and see what's best for the safety of students. Also, the staff has been very supportive. We have, right before school started, we heard a new long-term kindergarten substitute teacher, first grade teacher and a third grade teacher. And their team members, their grade-level team members have been very supportive, continue to help out those teachers as they make the adjustments to working at Lee. Once again, it's always nice when we have the enrollment numbers where we have to increase the staff. Also, staff's been supportive and patient with the administrative change that occurred at the elementary. So once again, the staff has been outstanding, helping out, being good teammates. So once again, the staff has been outstanding, helping out, being good teammates. I do want to give a special thank you to our building sub, Mrs. Bridget Good. She came in hired as a building sub, and even before school started, she was placed in a teacher's classroom while the teacher has been on leave since the beginning of the school year. So Mrs. Good has done a great job stepping in, taking over the classroom, and then being part of the team at Lee. Now, we've had the unique opportunity, or experience, I should say, where we've had to evacuate a building very close to dismissal time, and then we had to evacuate school grounds right at arrival time. So something never really planned for, and you kind of just react to, even though you kind of think you have a plan. So staff did a great job stepping up, you know, taking some direction, take some leadership, helping out. Other administrators from other buildings also come to help out at the elementary. So it's one thing, you know, I've gotten very positive feedback from parents about that, how it appeared to go smoothly, which is always good. And I know trying to dismiss students, trying to, you know, get them during arrival to evacuate to other buildings, different locations on campus. So once again, kudos to the staff for really helping out, stepping up during that time. And with construction, you know, it's like little field trips for students every day that they can watch the big trucks, you know, digging up some holes, burying some things, and just getting ready for the addition. So I might enjoy watching them for a little bit, and when I'm out there in the morning and the afternoon. So it's exciting, it's going to be very exciting to see the progress, because, you know, we see it live every day. So it'd be nice when we start seeing some of the structures going up, so that's pretty fun to see. And as we look at the virtual, as many parents understand that this is new to everybody. Yes, some teachers are continuing to see what works best for them, you know, looking at, you know, their training, and once again, teachers are helping other teachers, join them in their classrooms, just seeing how some things work out, because, you know, just like in normal face-to-face teaching, all teachers have different strategies, so it's very nice that staff is able to share those strategies. And once again, with parent feedback that we have received, both positive and then some concerns, you know, we look at those, have discussions with teachers, and seeing how we can continue moving forward and make this virtual learning beneficial to all students involved. So it's been a good start to this school year, access some challenges we weren't readily ready for, but as we move forward, things kind of, you know, seem to be getting a little smoother and a little better as we continue forward and continue learning about COVID-19, policies, procedures, construction, all those fun things that we have going on every single day. So always thanking staff, not only at Lee, but the other buildings for the support as we go through these different challenges.
Thank you. Mr. Bartel?
There you are.
Yep.
You know, when we sit and reflect on, you know, going into your week four here, Mr. Birkmeyer and I are quite happy, all things considered, where we're at. There's been some bumps in the roads, and I'll go over a few of those in a minute, but considering that we're back face-to-face, and kids are eating, and they're socially distancing for the most part, and we keep teaching them that and talking to them about that. But, you know, a good example is the very first day of school, you know, and we were letting off at about 7:25, doors open at 7:30, because we don't want congregating in the common areas of the school. We just want them to get in, get the class, and be in their groups so that we can contract trace, you know, should we have to, so on and so forth. But that first day of school, it was a long process, and we probably didn't officially start school till about 7:55, 7:50, 7:55, and school's supposed to start at 7:40. But the next day, and the days leading up to now, we're starting school on time. Kids are coming up, they're getting in their lines, they know how to take their temperature, and they're moving right along. Kids are wearing their masks in the spots that they're supposed to, and they're not fighting us on it. And I think part of that is, is they feel fortunate and happy to be back at school, and, you know, as long as we all do our part, we can stay in school, and that's the goal, you know, because no one would want to repeat the last six months, you know, starting March 13th or whatever. So it's been really impressive, and it's also been really impressive, you know, the parents, the students, the teachers, everybody's patience, because everything takes time, and things take time to get right. The virtual parent night, student night, we handed out the laptops, and we got our students online. It took Mr. Walmsley, Mr. Birkmeyer, myself, Mr. Christmas, Mr. Schwanger, Mrs. Jar, and Mr. Lamont, for both groups, it took us over an hour to get kids to make sure their passwords were working, make sure their laptop fired up correctly, make sure they knew how to get the Schoology. All of that stuff took a long time with our virtual students, you know, before school even started. So then, the first week of school, first day was a half-day, you know, sharing our stories, welcome back, you know, the icebreakers, getting to know you, then the next day, and the next day. Well, Mr. Schwanger, myself, and Mr. Birkmeyer had to get 500 students, the same thing that we did to the virtual students, had to make sure that their laptops fired up correctly, make sure that they knew how to get the Schoology, make sure their passwords worked, reset passwords. All of that takes time. So we did get some concerns or complaints from some of our virtual students that there was a lot of downtime. Well, there was, because what they did the night before, or the week before, I should say, in that hour to two-hour block, we had to do for the 500 kids that were in school. So, and that has all worked itself out. But even the kids in class whose computer cranked right up, passwords all worked, they were able to get to their stuff, well, they sat there too with some dead time. And so, I mean, so that, you know, that's going to happen, and some of that has been worked out. When that did get worked out, our teachers were able to go over, and I wrote them down here because I didn't want to miss any, over the next two, three, four days is that bootcamp that we've always talked about. And this year, the bootcamp was in every classroom every hour, to making sure that our students knew how to use the platform, should we have to shut down, so on and so forth. So we cover topics such as Schoology and how to do discussions through Schoology for feedback and for classroom discussions electronically. The course dashboard, where to find each of your courses and the stuff that was, that you needed to get to in order to participate in the class. How to set websites in your Schoology, how to make sure that they were there and set our common ones, how to use email, how to set tabs, how to set up Adobe and make sure Adobe was your, you know, our PDF browser, how to create folders, Office 365. So all of that information was covered in two, three days, and, you know, some of that stuff was new to several of our staff. But again, I applaud them for diving right in, you know, back in July and August, and spending time, you know, to educate themselves so that we don't have a repeat of March 13th to June, where there's hardly any interaction, because our goal was some form of interaction, like Mr. Walmsley said, the state says it's got to be once a week. Well, we're trying to do it with seven different teachers hourly. Now, some days, that's going to happen a lot, and sometimes it's not going to, just like in class, sometimes we don't get called on. So that's one of the, I'm going to go over a few of the virtual concerns and then move from there, but connectivity has been an issue. Some areas in the district just don't have very good internet. We've also had some situations where a family would have one hotspot with two different laptops, and, but they also had different routers in the house, and it was interfering, so it kept kicking one off. And then the one that would kick off, it would try to go to the other router instead of the hotspot. And so we helped that family, if, say, you know, they came in, said, "Well, if you place your laptops in different locations, try that, see if it helps." I didn't know any of this, it was Mr. Schwanger was talking to them and saying, you know, move to different locations, so on and so forth. So that helped, you know, that family. One of the other issues was being called on. Some of our comments tonight, you know, with teachers saying, you know, their parent, or some of our public comments saying how tough it is for teachers, and they appreciate it, couldn't agree more. It is tough to teach 25 kids in front of you, but, and the four or five virtual, but they are getting it done. There isn't a complaint from the teachers. It's different, and it's going to take some time. We talked, as a staff, you know, if you have, you know, you take your laptop up to the front of the board, and the camera's on you, so it's projecting at home, I'm talking into my mic so they can hear at home, the class sees me, but I'm looking at the laptop, well, you know how these little squares are on this laptop, if somebody's raising your hand, you know, personally, I thinking back to my teaching days, I wouldn't do it that way, but some of my teachers want to do it that way, and I support them, you know, as long as we're getting it done to the best of our ability. We realize that through the message boards, when a message comes up, the microphone will ding. So if I'm around the classroom and I hear a ding, I can say into my mic, "Hey, I understand there's a question, my virtual students, I'll be right there in a minute." So that's helped with some of this. So the fact that we're in week four and we're hammering this out and getting that back-and-forth communication, I think is pretty special. I've been in a lot of classrooms and just hearing the interaction back and forth with the teachers and the virtual students. Some of them are projected on the board, some are on their laptops, and I've seen kids with their own laptops having their own team. Oh, I think it's those. Virtual kids, COVID, but one thing is, you know, we really push classroom instruction at work, we partner work, collaborative learning, shoulder partners, et cetera. And with the social distancing, some of that's harder, so we're doing a little more traditional, sit and get, a little more traditional than we would like to, but we have to. So with some of that, we're going to have some downtime. You know, as a former math teacher, you know, I give 10 problems, and I'm going to go around and work with kids for 10, 15 minutes to work on these problems. Well, for my virtual students, I would have, I wouldn't have the camera following me around, I'd have it up on the board somewhere, you know, with "I'll be right back" or "Independent work" or whatever. Those are little things we got to communicate maybe a little better and say what's going on, and then that's where they might ding to me, or say, "Hey, Mr. Bartels, I have a question," and then I go over and I help them, you know, virtually. So those are some of the things that we're working through. Some of the things, we've had to talk to some families about background noise and background conversations that the classrooms are picking up on that probably shouldn't be hearing. That's a reality, and we've had those conversations. And we've had to talk to a few parents that would get into the camera during the class time and ask teachers questions. It's really for the student and teacher to ask. As a parent, if they have questions or concerns, we would ask them to call the teacher or email the teacher to get back to them. And that hasn't been a horrible problem, but it's happened a little bit. The other thing that we're working through is discussion boards, you know, those are for educational purposes. We've had to remind our students that that's a learning tool, to have discussions back and forth academically, and some of the conversations have been inappropriate, and we're addressing that. And then, we got to stay ahead of these kids because they're good with this technology, you know, they're setting up their own team meetings during class that we're also trying to work through and help control a little bit. But, you know, again, starting week four, the amount of concerns is dwindling drastically, and, you know, nine out of 10 times, the parent will call and work it out with the teacher, and will praise the teacher, and saying, you know, "We realize they're giving it their all, and we're going to have connectivity issues," so on and so forth. Some of the other things, you know, misconceptions is, you know, that, you know, they thought it was going to be a bird's-eye view of the classroom and seeing everything that's going on. Well, that wasn't really the intent. We don't want kids unnecessarily on camera if they don't have to be. We want it to be, you know, a give-and-take, mainly with the teacher and the student, back and forth, and partners when we can. But again, what they've been able to accomplish in the plan and the idea and keeping these kids, I think, has been great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels.
Great.
Okay, so at the high school, you know, we're going to cover a lot of what Mr. Koshin and Mr. Bartel said here as well, but we got as much communication as we could out early and often to our parents and our students. You know, we use the school messenger, we use the Facebook. We had a lot of our staff create a pretty creative video to get out our policies and procedures out to our families and our staffs prior to the first day of school. So we really focused on trying to get the communication out to our families as much as possible before school. One of the things that we found is that our teaching staff at the high school, not only have they been very eager and willing to learn, but they've also become each other's best resource. So as we kind of put things in place, they're bouncing ideas off of each other, they're finding more creative and more efficient ways to do things through the Schoology and the teams. So that's been encouraging, that not only have they jumped in this all the way, but they're, they are very supportive and are eager to help each other. Much like the middle school, we're a little bit worried on that first day that the line was very long, and there were some social distancing issues outside the front door and the bus door. And again, we were probably 10 minutes late on that first day, but every day, we're getting better. You know, we're not opening those doors until right about 7:30 now, and we're getting everybody all spaced out, so they're all the way down the front of the school and around the corner in a lot of cases, and they're socially distancing, they're coming in, they got the procedures, some of them prefer the wrists, the rest of them go for the foreheads, they all have their different, unique ways of getting their temperature and getting in. We've used every other locker every other hour, and then the outside passing has made a huge difference in the high school. So one of our big concerns was crowding down at the four corners. So we were pretty intentional on where we put their lockers down there, in that four-corner area. We went every other locker down there, as well as opening a lot of those outside doors. So when you come in during passing in the high school time right now, it's a different animal than it's been in the last couple of years. It's a lot smoother and a lot less crowded. Lunchrooms are the three lunchrooms, or the two lunchrooms in the three lunch hour periods, so it's been great as far as the spacing and the protocols. I've been very pleased with the way that both the kids and the adults, you know, we expect the adults to do it, but the kids have been great about wearing the masks. The only problems is occasionally they'll pull it down below the nose, and we just have to give them that gentle reminder that the only way a mask works is it needs to be covering that nose as well. So just give them that gentle reminder, and they pull it up. We got our laptops out during that first week to our students, and much like the other schools, there have been some technical issues, but we've been working through theirs, through those. It's been primarily hardware and not software, but Mr. Lamont's done a great job of getting that hardware fixed and getting as many of those problems solved as we can while we get up those hotspots to our kids as well. We've had a lot of different parent communications with our virtual students, just kind of, again, talking through the different expectations we've had, making sure that our kids are on camera so that we can take attendance for them, and that they need to be on camera for the entire hour. So we've had, you know, probably half a dozen conversations about that. We have had some parents that wanted their kids switched back and forth from virtual to in-person and vice versa. So we've had to explain to them that, you know, that there are the five-week windows, and that one's coming up here very soon, so we can get that switched over for them and see if we can meet the needs they need that as well. The classroom instruction's getting better every day. It's, you know, we had some staff come to us at first, and the question is, "Well, am I teaching to the kids that are online, or am I teaching to the kids that are in person? Where do I make my focus?" And it's been a slow learning curve for our staff, but you walk into a classroom now, and we're getting better every day at it, and I think our kids that are especially in-person are getting used to having that camera on it and used to having that microphone coming through. that microphone coming through, that, that teacher's voice being, you know, brought to them in a little bit different manner. But um, I, you know, as a leader of the building, I, I think Mrs. Borwick and I couldn't be any more happy with the way this year started. The kids have been terrific, the, the teachers have been terrific, the parents have been great, and uh, we're looking forward to doing great things this year.
Thank you, Mr. Castle.
Um, just a couple other uh, to echo that, um, you know, some of the, I've gotten quite a few calls and emails from parents and I really have been strongly encouraging and asking them, you know, to start with the teacher and the building. You know, I can be a middleman and liaison to get them help and support. Um, it really goes back to what all three principles says, it starts at the classroom teacher. And I, I don't remember which, which parent said this during public comment. We do have the best teachers. They, they, they want the best for kids. And I think some of them take some of the hiccups that we've experienced very personally. Uh, but they, I think it's also helped us grow as an educational group to become better uh, at working with each other and supporting each other and helping each other. So um, just a couple of the things, um, you know, the, we mentioned a few hiccups on the technology. We have ordered a well over 100 laptops and it's like 130 or 140 laptops. Uh, we have also ordered uh, additional monitors for every classroom. Now those have been placed weeks ago, those orders. Um, but if you can imagine, every school district in the United States is buying technology. So a lot of those orders are on back order and, and will be, will be coming, but it's just a delay. Um, I sent the board, there was a question uh, regarding the four and six year terms. I sent you information regarding that. My recommendation on the policy tonight is still to stay with the six year, your terms and, and address it at a later point if you want to. I was very happy that we had one of our districts in our county come visit us and I want to thank Mr. Bartels and Mr. Castle for coming and talking. Roseville Schools is getting ready to open in-person instruction. They kind of have a different set. More of their families wanted to go virtual than in-person. Um, so they wanted to come and learn what we did. They were pretty impressed with all the uh, safety and protocols we have in place and the checkpoints and, and how we're using uh, the technology and learning about it. Um, took a lot of notes and um, uh, hopefully they'll have as, as much of the success as we did. Um, I want to echo Teresa or compliment her, Teresa Ranger with the REA contract. Uh, it's been a pleasure to work with them over the summer through this process. Um, I said at the very beginning to the board and I said it throughout this whole process, we're only going to be successful if we all come together on this. And so uh, the ability to meet over the summer, the administrators coming in, um, 60, the 80 teachers came in to look at the camera system, almost, uh, I think we're at 80%, 85% who came in. Um, we've invested well over $50,000 in professional development prior to the start of school. Um, we have a lot of things to be proud of and I, and I thank the parents and the students for all they've done. Uh, it's been a pleasure walking through the hallways, seeing the kids back again, the excitement of having them in, in the, in the school and wanting to be at school. Um, as one of the parents mentioned, there was an executive order that was issued by the governor this past Friday requiring all K5 students to wear masks now all day long. Um, you know, our plan to abide by the law is required. Um, I know we do, um, I do have a, I did receive from the attorney, they sent it out to all district, kind of an opinion on, on that, that executive order. Um, it's basically the way it's, it way it's presented, it is, it is law and, and we cannot knowingly violate the law without having uh, repercussions regarding that. So uh, our plan is to move forward with that. Um, though we will work with staff and um, you know, you are right. You can't, kids need a little breather through that mask every day. Any, any, I need one when I'm wearing my mask all day too. So um, it is challenging. Um, from the legislative update, uh, we have a budget. Um, surprisingly, I look back at where we were in June, uh, um, three months ago. Um, you know, with everything the state was telling you, the budget office, the House, the Senate, our legislators, um, they had all prepared us for a, uh, if they couldn't figure it out, they were going to prepare us for a significant cut. And there were even some legislators that predicted it to be well over $1,000. Um, we budgeted conservatively, made some uh, very hard choices and decisions. Um, the current budget was uh, passed by the House and Senate. It's, it went on to the governor's office to be signed. Um, but basically, um, for those, uh, I'm listening audience, just to recall that we were cut $175 in July uh, from the state from last year. So after the school year was over, they came and cut us 175. They did give us some CARES money, which was very much grateful because it got everything that we needed to start the school year uh, going, uh, the training, the technology, the supplies, the cleaning, everything. Uh, so we, we were ready for school. That cut was restored and we are expected to have our per pupil count to be uh, the 8,111 uh, as our foundation allowance. So the $700 per pupil cut um, did not actually happen. Um, they also added additional allocations. Uh, it's approximately $65 per pupil to be distributed on a 50/50 blend for the 1920 and the 2021 school year based on our count. Um, there's some other um, stipulations to that too. Um, there was some increased funding for third grade reading to develop for literacy coaches. That's more of the county level. There were some increased funding for special education, about $70 million. Um, that funnels through our county level. Um, you heard tonight, the COVID-19 extended learning plans. Um, there were some extensions given on that one. Uh, Mr. Koshin mentioned the kindergarten entrance observation or kindergarten assessment has been suspended for a year. Um, so a lot of good things on the budget. So um, coming to you uh, next time will be how the, the dollars would be uh, reallocated in the budget for the FY 2021 school year. And lastly, I just want to remind parents who are currently virtual or currently in-person, as Mr. Castle said, the window to change is coming up. It's actually this Friday. If you want to go from virtual to in-person or in-person to virtual, uh, Friday is the deadline. It's basically the halfway point for the first card marking. Um, to start, uh, students to start on October 5th. They would need to be uh, in their new position, whether they're coming back in-person or going to be virtual. Uh, the next window won't be until November 6th. Um, I think we are the only district in McComb County that has a very short window of five weeks. Uh, um, I know our neighbor to the west of us is trimesters. I think Roseville's trimesters. Um, a lot of them are doing a card marking. So we're trying to give options for family because situations change. So again, this Friday is our deadline date to switch from in-person to in-person or vice versa. With that, um, oh, two things real quick. Uh, Mr. Koshin, we had a gas leak. I just want to clarify. The first gas leak we knew about, we knew about the underground line. It was on the drawing. We did not expect to have that much trapped gas in the line. And so um, the staff reacted exactly how we should react. They looked out for the safety of the students and evacuated the building as quickly as possible. And being at the end of the day, uh, we had a little more challenges presented to us, but they did a remarkable job. Um, the other, the gas leak that happened the other day, uh, the main gas line that feeds the uh, building, which was put in when the building was built in 50s-ish, um, so it's an older line. Um, something hit it and it, it cracked and it was just a small leak. Uh, we have our unit ventilators uh, on constantly to create the air circulation. So it definitely picked up that, that gas smell. And again, staff did exactly what we asked them to do. They're conscious, they're aware of their surrounding, that staff ever before school start knew about it and were able to act and respond appropriately before we got um, 500 kids in that building. So uh, everything's been fixed and we are progressing forward. With that.
All right. Thank you. Moving on, items, items of interest for members of the board. Does anybody have anything?
I don't know, I would just, oh, you go ahead.
Uh, I was just gonna say that, um, you know, I'm a parent of a second grader in the district and I was extremely upset when I heard about the mask mandate. Um, so I did go online and on the Michigan.gov website, you can contact the governor's office. I know as a district, we have to follow the mandate, but as parents, we can go on and contact the governor's office and share opinions on the executive orders. You can call, you can write, and you can um, email it directly over. And there's actually a title for executive order opinion. So I would encourage all those parents out there to go on there and express your opinion for Richmond Community Schools.
Yeah, I was going to speak to that too. I, I'm pretty sure she doesn't care about anybody's opinion but her own. Um,
We can try.
Right? No, I, I mean, if it's all you can do, it's all you can do, but it seems like uh, less and less intelligent things are coming from her office in Lansing as we go on. So I, I feel for all the parents uh, with K through fifth graders, uh, because I couldn't agree with you more. Um, but unfortunately, the person that was elected doesn't agree.
Anybody else? Okay, gonna move on to our action item. The first one is the acceptance of the extended COVID-19 learning plan. There's sample resolution.
A motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and accept the extended COVID-19 learning plan for the 2021 school year as presented in the attached documentation.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next, approval of COVID-19 hazard pay stipend. This is something that um, Board of Education started talking about, um, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, guys, when we started getting our group of employees together that were putting the plan and, and putting the work and when we were talking about that we were gonna, um, we were gonna come back face to face, that that was the direction we were going. And as a board, we asked Mr. Wamsley and Tammy Shad, um, we wanted to offer some kind of hazard pay stipend to our employees, um, as a thank you for coming back to work, working through this pandemic. It's very difficult. We recognize it and we're so appreciative of all the people who stuck with us and who are working every single day. Um, while it's not, it's not a huge stipend, but it is, it is, uh, it's a $200 stipend for every employee. Um, we were able to use CARES Act money to do it. And um, it's a small token monetarily, but it's a huge token on behalf of the board for our thanks for the work that you guys are doing. Um, so there is a sample resolution.
A motion to authorize the superintendent to issue a $200 COVID-19 hazard pay stipend to all employees and identified contracted employees as outlined in the attached documentation.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
And just other than what you said, thank you.
And I know that Chris and Sheri are not with us this evening, but they, they both very much support this. This is all seven board members. Um, this is something that we wanted to do. Anybody else? Okay, I'm gonna do a roll call. Kyle.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Next, approval of all those board policies that we did a couple of weeks ago. Um, there's a sample resolution.
A motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the board policies as presented during a first reading on September 14th, 2020 and outlined in the attached documentation.
Support. Angela, was that you?
Yes.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Um, next item, the item that we added to the agenda, the approval of the amendment to the REA contract. Uh, just, I want to make a, just a little statement on behalf of the board and anyone else who wants to talk after me can. Um, this is, this is a very important thing that we're doing. This is a promise that was made by this Board of Education and it's a promise that was kept. It's not only the seven of us sitting at this table, but it is board members who have sat at this table before us who have said so many times what we believe in our teachers. We believe in our teachers needed to be paid more. And if the time came where the money was there, that is what we would do. We value what our teachers do every day and we know that they're not paid like some other districts. Um, so this, this amendment brings back a lot of things for people. It brings back longevity to teachers that haven't had longevity. If I'm gonna say eight, eight plus years, 10 years, 10 years. Um, step increases for teachers on staff. This, this is huge and it's something that I'm really proud of that we were able to do it. And we got lucky. Uh, the legislature decided not to ram us, um, and to not make the cuts that they said, that enhancement millage passing helps us that money for the next 10 years. That is something that this board, we were talking about this months ago before the pandemic hit, that what we wanted to do with that enhancement money, we talked about setting aside money for the turf field for the bond issue so that when it came time to make um, repairs, if you will, to that, that money would be there. Set aside money for order, purchasing school buses. And the other one was salaries, that we needed to make our, our teachers whole and that's what we're doing tonight. So um, just on behalf of the board, uh, I, I thank Mr. Wamsley and Tammy Shad for the work they did, um, negotiating this and following, following our direction. Anybody, anybody else want to say anything before we?
Just echo your thoughts.
You covered it all.
Okay, um, I know there's a sample resolution. Um, everybody got a copy of it, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So whoever wants to go, go ahead, sorry.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve on an amendment to the two-year contract between Richmond Community Schools and MEA slash Local One Richmond Education Association set to expire on August 31st, 2020, as outlined in the attached documentation.
Support. Okay, it was moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Other than, again, I want to reiterate, Chris and Sheri are not here, but they are in full support of this. And by law, because I have, I am related to someone who is part of the teachers union, I have to abstain from this vote. So I'm gonna do a roll call. Jessica.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, looking for a motion to go into closed session for the purposes of negotiations pursuant to section 8C of the Michigan Open Meetings Act.
Pursuant to section 8C of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the purposes of negotiations.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Um, we will be going into closed session. We will be coming back out and uh, we might possibly be voting on something after we come out. So we're going to sign off for right now and be back. All right, we are back in open session at 10:42 and I am looking for a motion to amend the agenda to add an item number 14, approval of hourly rate and salary increase for non-union employees.
I motion to amend the agenda to add item number 14, approval of increase of hourly rate and non-union employees.
Hourly rate and salary increase for non-union.
Hourly, hourly rate and salary increase for non-union employees.
Okay.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Okay, item 14, approval of hourly rate and salary, salary increase for non-union employees. There's a increase for non-union employees. There's a sample resolution?
A motion to approve the increase in salary or hourly rate for non-union employees in the amount of 3% effective September 28th, 2020, as outlined in the attached documentation.
Support. It has been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Other than I just want to acknowledge that this is all our non-union employees with the exception of the superintendent, who's not getting a raise because we already have a contract in place with him. So it's everyone but the superintendent. Anybody? Got anything they want to say? Wow, it's, it's getting late, people. Sorry. I'm, I'm don't even know if I'm speaking correctly. Okay. With that being said, I'm going to do a roll call vote. Kyle.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Jessica. And I vote aye. Motion carries. And with that, we are adjourned at 10:44 PM.